Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, March 28, 2023 at 6:00 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor K. Zimmerman from City on a Hill International Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Mojave Military Museum.
Let's pray. Father God, we just thank you for this amazing city that you've given us. And I thank you, Lord, for each one of the leaders that you have in place for this time, for this season. Starting with Mayor Cal, I'm just thankful for him, each one on the council, our police chief, fire chief. You've put them in place, God, for this time. I thank you, Lord, that you're doing amazing things in this city to bless your people. And now I'm going to speak the decree that you gave us, Father. We're going to decree it till we see it. I decree over the city of Lake Havasu City that this city shall be a city of righteousness that honors God in all her ways, a city of hope to all her people and all those who come here, a city of light where darkness finds no room to hide, a city of love that prospers in all her ways, providing prosperity and goodwill to all her people as well as those surrounding her, and a city of peace to all who dwell here in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Ms. Hernandez, if you want to talk a little bit about the Mojave Military Museum?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. It's a privilege to be here tonight. The pledge was led by our board member, Greg Logan, retired Navy veteran. The Mojave Military Museum What So Proudly We Hail exhibit is the second exhibit in a series featuring period items, photos, documents, books, uniforms, as well as other U.S. military donations from our generous community and county.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So just a quick recap of where we were in 2022. So we started here at the City Hall. We had a great exhibit there. We ended up at the Views over on Swanson. We had an exhibit at the library. We were at the London Bridge Resort around the Gold Carriage. We also had an exhibit at Mojave Community College. And then we were at the airport and we were back at the library. And now we were word of mouth, we're going to be, we've met with the Mojave Community College in Kingman, and they gave a presentation there. And we're going to be doing an exhibit there in Kingman. And then we have April, May, and June, we'll be back here at the library. Just wanted to give everyone an update where we're going to be starting out for 2023.
Thank you, Board Member David Diaz. The What So Proudly We Hail exhibit is open to the public and is always free. This is not a revenue generating effort. We are recognized by the Art Action Fund, by the Museum Association of Arizona, and the American Alliance of Museums. The What So Proudly We Hail exhibit includes a 54th Transportation Battalion Vietnam 1969 yearbook from Army veteran, from Lake Havasu resident James Johnson, who was 19 years old when he was deployed. We have a book signed by five Navaco code talkers. World War II veteran, James Johnson, I'm sorry, Don Borland, served on the Allied warship Navy destroyer, the USS Quick. His clock commemorating the surprise attack at Pearl Harbor in 1941 will be on display. These displays and these exhibits, especially on the campuses, are so important to our student veterans. They serve, they come back, and they are honored and privileged to have their items on display as well as other World War I through the Iraqi war items. Very important. We strive to portray service over ambition. A 1954 Navy boot camp graduates photo taken at the U.S. Navy Training Center in San Diego, and several personal items from U.S. Army and Air Force flight instructors are highlighted. Recent donations include a Kingman Korean Army veteran Leonard Moskow donated a map of the Korean War and a World War II bayonet. Those will be on display at the library. U.S. MCC Army student veteran artist Corporal Cody Price of Kingman, who served in the Iraqi war, has donated his art. We are proud to be a part of this community and looking forward to tomorrow's Vietnam Veterans Memorial Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item four, which is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Council members Nancy Campbell.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Present.
Vice Mayor David Lane.
Here.
Mayor Kal Sheehi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is our consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Koch.
Motion.
Please.
Move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item six is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 6.1 is to announce vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are a few vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, two alternate members. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at LHCaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.2 is the City Manager's Report. Mr. Knutson?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Lots to celebrate and lots to proclaim in this last couple of weeks. Mayor Sheehy participated on a panel during Congressman Gosar's recent Water Roundtable in Goodyear just a few weeks ago, and we greatly appreciate you attending these types of discussions representing our rural community, protect our most precious resource, which of course is our water. Vice Mayor Lane, you presented a proclamation at the Bands and Brews by the Beach Day event, celebrating the second annual event that originated by a class project of the Lake Havasu Chamber Foundation for Education and Leadership, the Class of 2022. And you also presented a proclamation to one of our pioneers, Jean Steele, in honor of her 90th birthday celebration. Jean and her husband moved here in 1969. Jean's birthday and the day proclaimed in her honor is March 29, which is tomorrow. Happy birthday to you, Jean. Councilmember Campbell and Vice Mayor Lane attended the traditional flag retirement ceremony in honor of our U.S. flags, who have fulfilled their duty, recognizing what the flag stands for and raising new flags in their honor. Also attending to pay tribute were Boy Scout PAC 85, Troop 85, Troop 55, and PAC 992. And Mayor, you also attended a ribbon cutting for one of our newer businesses, Harleys and Hot Rods. Mayor, you also proclaimed the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and the week of April 23 through April 29 as Crime Victims Rights Week. And the top photo from left to right is our Captain Kirk Sessina, the Director of Haven, Mary Lou O'Connell, our Victim Services Specialist, Crystal Stevens-Villarette, of course Mayor Sheehy, Lieutenant Eric Lamacke, and Detective Dylan Teschler. In the bottom photo, from the bottom right photo, they are joined by Deborah Walgren, who is the supervisor of the local Department of Child Safety. And some updates for Council. As you're aware, the city entered into a contract with FCI Contractors to remodel the former Havasu Fitness Center property that was purchased by the city. The project is going very smoothly, thanks to the project manager that we have on the team, who's Jared Tealy, and the contractors that are on the job. A few pictures of some of the changes. Demolition began in January, and that is now complete. This property provided a clean slate for the improvements that are needed for the municipal court operations. Framing for the courtrooms began several weeks ago. Courtroom A, if you look at the photo on the left, on the left side of that photo is courtroom A, and courtroom B would be on the right in that same photograph. And if you look on the photo on the right, the elevator pit has been poured and framing for the upper landing is now in place, which of course will provide ADA access to the second floor. The framing for the second story addition is seen in these photographs, so this is on the second floor. This addition increased the space by approximately 1,800 square feet. The project is on schedule for opening at the end of this calendar year. Framing will continue for interior walls, followed by ceiling installation. We'll have a concrete pour for the second story expansion, which is scheduled for this week already. The new HVAC system is scheduled to be installed next month in April, and we'll start drywall in early summer months. As we go over to the Aquatic Center, the HVAC project work continues this week with both day and night work. The work will include the completion of our chemical rooms, electrical connections, ductwork and piping, removal of temporary heaters, and setting condensing water pumps. The project is still waiting on several units to be delivered. Hopefully, it'll take place in late spring or perhaps bleed into early summer months, just in time. And just a reminder, with the record amounts of rain that we've had in the last couple of months, there are lots of weeds that are growing. This is, weeds can be a nuisance in some areas around the city, including the excessive growth of noxious weeds like scorpion weed, which is photographed here. So we ask that you please be considerate of your neighbors and keep your property clear of weeds and debris, prevent any insect or rodent infestations, or anything that could become a fire hazard as the summer heat starts to come in the upcoming months, and/or anything that could obviously cause some health and safety concerns for the neighbors or the community at large. So they're growing, so please take care of the weeds that might be popping up in your yards. From the city's perspective, we're working hard to clear the weeds as they come. And as a reminder, tomorrow at 10:30 AM, we celebrate our veterans at the Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day Outdoor Cookout Event at the Friends of the Fair Rodeo Grounds, which is located at Sarah Park. All veterans are invited to this outdoor cookout. There is no RSVP required, so please come and let's celebrate our veterans. Mayor and Council, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. All right, we'll move on to item seven, which is our public hearing. Starting with 7.1 is discuss the downtown catalyst design and construction options for moving forward. Mr. Keen?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before Dig Studios gives their presentation, I'd just like to give a brief history of this project and the goals associated with it. In 2015, Lake Havasu Community created a Vision 2020 Revitalization Plan with setting goals for economic improvement. This plan, along with three projects, were submitted to the America's Best Communities Competition after several town hall meetings to discuss the future needs of Lake Havasu. Lake Havasu City won a $2 million prize in this competition. One of the projects that were submitted during this competition was the Downtown Catalyst Project. The goals of this project were to create a daily downtown gathering location for residents and visitors to enjoy, a location that would enhance our current special events, and a space that would attract more special events into the downtown area. In 2017, Lake Havasu City purchased a 1.5 acre parcel of land on the corner of Querrio and McCulloch to be the location for this downtown catalyst site. In September of 2021, City Council approved a design service contract with Dig Studios to produce designs and construction documents for this project. Throughout this process, Dig Studios held several meetings with stakeholders and the public to hear their desires for the space. This item has also been a standing item on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to gather additional input on the project. Two of the most common occurring themes throughout these meetings have been brought forward by the public. Downtown merchant association and other user groups were the need for restrooms and shade. This item was on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Agenda last night, and they recommended this to the City Council to move forward with option three with a vote of six to one. I will now turn the presentation over to Chad Atterberry with Dig Studios to present the design and three options based on different funding opportunities.
Hello. Hi, I'm Chad Atterberry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, for having me here to give an update of this project. I think I'll just start as we click through the presentation here with a basic update. Currently, we've completed the construction drawings and designs up through what we call 90% drawings, so this is sort of a pre-permit set. This allowed Mr. Keen to engage RLB, a cost estimator, who we also have worked with in the early schematic phases of the project, to do a cost estimate for what you'll see is the current 90% design. To kind of just walk through the process here, the first slide you'll see here was some of the early design work that we did engage the public and stakeholders with and got feedback, not only on seating and shade and some of the program items that we wanted in the park, but a little bit about right sizing elements in the park. And if we click to the next slide, which kind of shows where that schematic design led us to, you can kind of see it's obviously covered currently in all turf. And what we want to do is make sure that the turf elements that we're including are sort of in that focused area, you know, that cooling area we want people to gather. But we are able to irrigate less and maintain a little bit less turf. And it also allows us a vehicular pathway to sort of go around this space and actually have other setup areas in the north end of the park. What it also does is it starts to right-size different events. So the walkways do have a design element to them, but we are also using those so that when smaller events or gatherings happen in the park, those can actually work and be oriented in different directions or fit in different spaces. And the circular design of the walkway and the colonnade that surrounds that walkway is also the armature for all of the power locations and also the site lighting. So as tents or food trucks, for instance, were in circular decomposed granite or vehicular concrete walkway that is that main hub, there's multiple locations around that circle that would provide that electrical infrastructure and have lighting around all those pedestrian areas. So what that allows is a small group could occupy the south end, for instance, pulling power off of the colonnade, orientating like a movie night in one direction or another, and always have that available to them. But of course, we know large events also happen here, so it allows for that larger space. We've sort of allocated the area on the east side toward the Wash, and we've expanded that space as well as located it closer to the main sort of power panels for what we call the kind of a stage area or a larger performance area to be set up on that side. You'll see here also, sort of represented by the sand-colored rectangles there in the southeast, that was where we are currently locating the restroom facilities and the infrastructure for that. So I won't go into too much detail because I'm going to break this down a little bit more as we go through where we were when we did get the cost estimate and we started looking at how this could be phased in or implemented with the funds available. So when we looked at the America's Best Communities funding, and essentially, if we were to implement that, of course, there's a lot of program elements that we could either put into that first phase or, you know, implement in a different phase. So this is one option of that, I would say. But this really does bring in sort of what we consider the baseline infrastructure for the park. So what you would essentially be able to install is all the site work, the grading that would be done, and allow the main pedestrian walkways and vehicular routes to be created. The infrastructure for water and sewer could be brought in, as well as the electrical service to the park that would eventually feed the power and lighting that came into the park. The turf in the middle, as well as sort of regrading and implementing some shade trees and turf along the Querrio and McCulloch intersection, would also be able to be installed at this phase. So there are alternatives we've discussed to try to look for ways of saving money, whether it's through excavation and haul-off options. And we're actually hoping some of that pricing is going in a good direction in our favor. As you know, over the last 18 months, these things have been in a high degree of fluctuation in terms of trying to estimate what the costs, especially for earthwork and those kind of elements are. So with options, you know, to try to look for savings as far as excavation and haul-off, we may also be able to install a phased approach to the restroom. We ideally would like a 40-foot sort of restroom facility that we ultimately would want to execute all at once, but those same modular restrooms also have, are able to become in 20-foot sections, and we could actually phase them the first half and then another element later, bringing all the infrastructure in, but ultimately only installing one of those units. So that's one option. I also made a note, for instance, you see from the original graphic, the center circle is all turf in this exhibit, just to show that we do have a reason, as I mentioned, of sort of bifurcating that turf area. It can be used to lay out tents. It can, it's a vehicular route for setting up, you know, which a lot of these events have large vehicles and things that are brought in. And so that becomes not only advantageous as a vehicular route, but also a little bit nicer for the turf maintenance over a long period of time. But if we were to make that all a turf area, there's potential cost reduction of around $21,000 to go for that route. There's also different types of paving. We have, in the design, we have a circular concrete, vehicular concrete walk. That's sort of that main inner circle, as well as a compacted vehicular rated DG pathway around the outside. Those could be different materials that potentially could also be a savings for the paving costs as well. So those are ways in which that we could look to implement different features that aren't able to be covered into this initial base budget. But you'll see here, the scope elements that can be included would be those initial infrastructure and site work elements that I mentioned, as well as trash receptacles and bike racks and elements like that. So I'll go to the next one here, and you can see that we're also pursuing options for funding through Arizona Parks Grant. And this would really make a huge difference in the implementation of this project and the phasing of this project. Along with everything that we already mentioned, this would actually allow us to complete the colonnade, which again is sort of the armature for all of the lighting and those power locations. Seat walls, the rest of the seating, I know it showed up in the graphic, but the picnic area, the picnic seating with festoon lighting, the rest of the landscape that would actually sort of cover the contoured grading around the berming to the north and along the Wash, those all could be implemented in full with that funding. And then, of course, as I mentioned, either the, if this was done in phases, you could bring in a second unit and complete that restroom installation, or if it was done all at once, you could have the full 40-foot unit brought in in that initial installation. So we would have lighting, power, the water and sewer, full restroom installation, seat walls, benches, picnic tables, festoon lighting, all implemented under that expanded budget that we see here. So it makes a pretty clear distinction than what's left, what would be remaining from that original design. And it is mainly the shade canopies. The shade canopies, more than just providing shade, also have LED lighting in them for, that can be, you know, colored for different events and holidays. It could be also coordinated with other events and concerts that are happening in the park. But of course, shade is that main element. It would bring also visually sort of a more distinctive element to the park that I think would make it stand out as sort of an icon, and again, really be that catalyst, not only as an activated space, but just visually as a signature piece of the downtown. So with the funding that we had already gone through before, we actually think that we potentially could go as far as implementing at least three of these canopies. So if we were to install the colonnade and then bring in those canopy sections between the colonnade in separate pieces, we could probably install up to three of those with that funding. And so that sort of makes that clear distinction of the full colonnade, the full shade elements with their LED lighting, as well as a screen wall, sort of in that matching aesthetic around the restroom unit, as being those elements that would be not quite funded by that park grant as well. So I'm going to stop there and just open it up for questions or comments so that we can kind of walk through where we're at.
Yeah, thank you very much. Are there any initial questions for Chad, for members of the council? Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. A couple things. First off, I've received a couple phone calls from the downtown, some of the business owners and property owners downtown that had never been contacted, and I thought that was going to be part of the scope. So I was wondering what we've done to contact the business owners and the property owners downtown.
So we did have an open house that was a public open house, but we also had a stakeholder outreach open house. Mike, you might remember the venue by name better, but we brought the designs that we had showed earlier and actually did have quite a good attendance there. I'm sure not every business owner attended, but there was outreach to specific stakeholders as well, to notify them of the coming meeting. This was quite some time ago. Our 30% phase was, I believe, 10 months ago, or nine or 10 months ago. So that's when we were onsite with those open house meetings, showing the design and getting comments and feedback. And we do have record of those as well.
And will there be opportunities for another meeting for stakeholders downtown to be able to weigh in?
We'd be happy to show the designs and speak more directly to stakeholders, and even if those are, you know, virtual meetings or whatever would make it more convenient for certain people to be able to review the design. The stage that we're at right now, obviously, is a little bit challenging to make larger, you know, because this has been reviewed by the Parks Board and other stakeholders and public, but I'm happy to go over any of the details with them as well.
Okay. And then on the shade structures, what kind of material are they made out of? What's the life expectancy?
So what we're trying to do is have a slatted steel structure that has a little bit of articulation and can essentially be a full shade, but let air move through it. So these are designed by Last, the architect that is on our design team, and they've created a design essentially that looks like a slatted design, but they're all steel. So we're looking at a painted steel that's obviously very durable and long-lasting. And the slatted design is on two sides of the frame, so it gives a full shade, but again, lets sort of a filtered light kind of move through it and also air, which I think in some ways can allow those things to cool off, so they don't become sort of heating elements that, you know, absorb heat all day and then are oppressive at night. You know, we want them to give shade during the day and then, you know, be sort of just a lighting element at night.
Right. Okay, and then each section is roughly a little over $6,000 a piece. How much are they a piece?
I think, I don't have that exactly memorized, but I-
No, just ballpark.
I would say ballpark, they're about $50,000.
About $50,000 a piece is $175,000, I think, for three of them.
Right. For, and all of the numbers that we looked at there have a lot of the markups included. So we have a cost estimate that has raw costs for the construction elements, but also what are the contractors' markups? And those also have contingencies and escalations built into them. And those also have contingencies and escalations built into them. Obviously nowadays, anytime we do a cost estimate, we not only have contingencies, but we also have escalation built into it because between now and six months from now, the prices are changing so much. So, so there is that built into the prices that we're looking at.
Right. And I understand this is just your estimates at this point. We're not approving budget.
Yeah, these aren't bids.
Well, what I'm getting at is that section of concrete that's in the middle of the grass, how much did you say that was?
It's about $21,000 because to take out the concrete is a certain savings, but then you have to put back irrigated turf.
So that wouldn't even pay for one, one section of the shade structure if we changed that?
Technically, no, but as I, as I mentioned, I think in conjunction with other, the other alternative paving options that we've looked at, and these are some of the things that we've talked with Mike about during the design process. You know, vehicular concrete is obviously very durable. It's a really great surface for, you know, pedestrians as well as vehicles. However, there are other surfaces that can be vehicular rated and, you know, used for setup of tents and food trucks and all of the things that we would like to activate the space with.
Okay. And then last night at the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting, Mr. Keen presented this for you, did a good job, even though it wasn't his presentation. And there was a lot of conversation. There was quite a few people there in the public. The main, just from the public was do it all and do it right and do it, do it, don't piecemeal it. Get it all done the first time around. The, some of the board members, some of the conversation there was if we went, they called it option 2B, where that other 175 would add some shade structures, but not others. The main conversation after that was in talking with the people, the people, the two things they wanted were restrooms and shade. So they didn't want to cut the shade out. So they'd like to see, that was the, the final vote was the recommendation to us is that we would complete the entire project with all the shade. One of the other things I wanted to mention, I mentioned it last night during that meeting. Originally, this was not intended to be called a park. It's our downtown catalyst project, and it's to drive economic development downtown. But I really appreciated the Parks and Rec Department taking on this and that committee. By doing that and kind of changing the scope a little bit, gave us the opportunity through Mr. Keen's office to be able to apply for that extra million dollars through the Arizona Parks. So I really believe the, moving that scope a little bit over to a park instead of just a catalyst project has really been helpful and will, will save a lot of money to our local taxpayers. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Lane. Are there any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Congressman Doyle?
I have a couple of questions. Of course, I know the biggest thing the park is used for right now is used for, you know, festivals and events and weekends and such. You know, as a balloonist, we also use the balloon for balloon inflations and, you know, night glows and such as that. So some of the concerns I have and people that have heard me, so I had a couple of questions for you. Parking was definitely a big, big issue. Does this do in the winner takes all bid that we would do it all? Does it also, does it include a bridge to get to the parking to the other side? And if so, do we look into that pricing?
So the, the bridge is not included in that pricing. The grading that we talked about, the site work, that essentially creates two plateaus out of a, with now a really consistent slope from that northeast corner, where, where we would actually want to land a bridge to cross the wash that goes over to the public parking that's, that does exist on the east side. There is some parking obviously to the west, but to utilize a pedestrian bridge, the grading would, would, would sort of be in place for that. So we're essentially creating a plateau in the, at the north side to even beyond the turf area to allow for vehicular movement and layout for, you know, a big tents and things like that potentially in that space. And then a berm, which we are showing planting along the edge as sort of as a buffer from the activity in the space to the uses to the north. But that berm does set the grading elevations essentially to land a bridge. But all of the costs of a bridge are not included in this, in this estimate. And going through that in early, in discussions for programming, some of the stakeholder outreach, as well as the early design estimates or that were done at 30%, really there was sort of a trade off there between how much infrastructure we put into the park, including restroom facilities and that bridge element. So we've looked at other bridges. It's hard to say because structural engineering is a really huge component of every bridge cost. But looking at this span, this could be upwards of $400,000 for sort of what we would consider a sort of a prefab as just for the, the actual bridge structure itself. And then the structural engineering for the abutments and the landing. We of course then would have to have additional walkways, additional lighting to access that bridge. So, you know, we're looking potentially, you know, $800,000 to a million dollars to cross the bridge, to cross the wash. But we do have a really nice public walkway that, that brings us down to McCulloch from that area currently. And that was, that was brought up in the public discussions, you know, that with that walkway, it's very, it's not a huge site to be able to navigate from that parkway down, that existing walkway and the plaza that was already created. So that actually did even drive a little bit of our thinking about that key entry than that, that location of the walkway into the park from that angle. So right now, we're hoping to circulate people from the public parking through that direction.
Okay. What about fences? I know we can't really put any fences or anything, because mostly the events they have, they have it closed off. And, you know, I know we'd have to put up fences along McCulloch on that side. But is there any fencing on the, the backside with the tree, the other two other sides? Any fences or gates that go in, in the design and that?
No fencing, no permanent fencing, I should say. One of the ideas behind the colonnade, however, is it would be really easy for temporary fencing of different types to use that colonnade and create entry points at the, at the walkways. So, you know, the, the colonnade, for instance, could actually be designed in a way to connect with the, you know, barrier fencing that, that is available, that can be rented or, or, you know, purchased by the city. But the, the colonnade would sort of be that perimeter potentially for events, you know, beer garden events and other kinds of things that maybe, you know, were ticketed concerts or something like that. And so that's part of what that efficiency of that colonnade would allow us to do. The site overall, fencing the site overall, I think one of the things that we heard was more of sort of this porous edge on Curio and McCulloch, you know, for things that actually might happen, you know, fairs that happen in the street and things like that, events that actually engage McCulloch and having those actually be more accessible from that edge. And so that inner space is sort of what we focused on from an event standpoint for containment.
So if that circular area is, would be like the event area, do we know the square footage or the space of that versus, you know? I guess my biggest concern is we're going from this big, beautiful lot that we can use for all these big events and bring trailers in and all that to this, what looks like maybe half or 60% of the whole. So do we know this, the site size, the overall size versus what this area was? Like beers and brats or one of those events have to, you know, what that, what that square footage area is?
I think you're correct. Actually, it is about 60% of the turf overall. And one of the main drivers of that, again, two of the things that we heard were about right sizing for a different scale of events and also, of course, the infrastructure. How can we efficiently bring infrastructure in, you know, to create power and lighting for, you know, those different events and have that be a permanent feature versus something that was temporary and constantly brought in and out? So, so the, the sort of the walkways and the distinction between turf and the DG areas allow us to sort of create that infrastructure. The turf size overall in the center, I believe, is around 25,000 square feet. So it's over half an acre in the middle.
Okay. And then I guess my other question, so for example, a lot of the events they'll bring in, like the Pearl Bailey Show, which is, we call it the Pearl Bailey Show, it's just a big trailer that they can open up and has sound systems and they project out. And then, you know, of course, then they'll have, they'll run speakers to the back of the events and all that stuff. Is there, how would something like a big trailer stage like that work at this? And is there any in the pre-wiring electrical that includes sound throughout the system? So they can put speakers or is there anything ran for sound?
So the power for those type of events would be provided. We have, again, we have a power panel brought in, power service brought into the site. We have smaller power outlets that are actually in those colonnades, up to 50 amp, where, you know, a lot of different, you know, whether it's the inflatable movie screens or the bouncy houses, the food trucks, those type of things would all be, be able to be powered. But we also have a power panel that directly could run like a camlock system, where we have a lot of like, like the typical concerts and things like that, you have their power sources. That's why we created that stage area, a larger hardscape area and a larger layout space that is closer to the panel. If you look at the, the three sort of shade structures, the best way to orientate where that panel is is just the very north end of those three structures is where that panel would be brought into. And that's close enough for those type of facilities to actually plug straight into the panel. And, and they typically like to, like, like event promoters and things like that, bring their own kind of camlocks for, for that type of powering. So that's what we have available in the site currently.
Where would they do, like, if they want to bring the stage in, can they access it from? Like, I'm trying to picture where they'd put the stage or where, or have you guys already planned a performance area or something like that as part of this?
Yeah, that, so the, the typical amphitheater for, that wants to scale for different events, you know, we like a 30 by 40 space sort of as a minimum. And, and that allows us to, to host most stages. And then the clear space on those particular structures allow, you know, up to like an 18-foot where you'd have, you know, the armature for, for lighting to be brought in and things like that. So there's a different sort of height and, and that's also part of the rotation of these shade structures. This gets in a little bit more to the, the design concept, but there's more of a horizontal shade that actually gives you that clear space over those performance areas. And then on the, on the west side, we actually have what we consider more of a vertical shade. It does shade the walkway right below it, but also it is sort of turn, turning or tilting up those panels so that, you know, 4:30, you know, people coming after work, evening events and those kind of things. It actually gives you a lot more shade than just underneath the shade structure. Because if everything had to be under a shade structure, we'd, you know, we'd be talking about a $2 million shade structure. So what we're really trying to focus on is what, how do we actually extend that shade in those, those times when people want to gather on the cool ground in the evenings and things like that? So we've actually turned those up. But to get that clear height for those type of events to kind of come into that stage area, we have more of a horizontal shade with that, you know, clear height underneath it at that area on the east side.
But you said the trailer itself or the stage that 30 by 50 would be at the, maybe, okay, so that, they could get a truck or trailer into there?
So what we've, what we've done is we've created vehicular routes in, and that's sort of why those are sort of wider, you know, paving areas than you would typically see, you know, for a small pedestrian, you know, paving in a park. We've actually made these wide enough and these are all, the costs that you see are all for vehicular rated concrete. But we also have compacted decomposed granite routes that kind of go up this east side. And you can sort of see it in the rendering that it's a little bit fainter area that kind of runs through there. But essentially, there's a vehicular route that goes all the way straight to the stage from the south entry. And then we're including improvements on Curio as well for a new sort of apron, a new access for, for vehicles to cross into the area. And so there's a full vehicular loop on the outside and then the ring itself is a vehicular loop.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for members of the council? Yeah, Chad, could you talk a little bit about the concepts? So just take us back a minute. Why did we get to this circular area? I know it went through public input, but I think some of it had to do with shading, which I think you covered a little bit, but if you could just take us back a little bit.
Right. So the, the three concepts essentially in their most simplest form, one was about activity and sort of this, this hub of activity, this catalyst space for events and bringing people in to a focused space. The, the second one was about sort of this faceted shape. And there's a lot of different aesthetics that can go with that. But, but the main idea was about right sizing spaces so that there wasn't just one singular space that, you know, if a small group or event comes in, it feels empty. You know, what we want is, is everything from daily visitors and residents to feel comfortable in the space to small events, to the really large events that do happen several times a year, you know, and, and do activate this space. So that's what the, sort of the, the division of the spaces idea kind of came from. And then Confluence sort of brought this idea about opening up more space along the wash, not only to sort of bring in some more trees along that side, but also just this idea of a more natural edge on that side. And, but then becoming a lot more formal and again, more porous from Curio and McCulloch, really taking advantage of the fact that those streets can be activated. And there's a lot of things that we probably don't have time to cover tonight. But, you know, even the fact that along Curio, for instance, that colonnade that comes around the current design does bring power out to that colonnade. And, you know, things even parked along the edge of the curb at, at Curio could even be activated if that street was shut down, right? So we wanted those edges to really be engaged and sort of porous in that way. But then the, the north and the east side along the wash to, you know, have more space from that activated zone. So those are sort of the, some of the concepts that were really early and like in their infancy. And then when we developed it a little bit further, it was based on the feedback that we got from these through the public open houses.
Yeah, thank you. And then the modular bathrooms, are they plumbed in? So they're, they're real bathrooms or just modular units that come in?
Correct. Yeah, these are, these are basically created out of shipping containers. And the, the shipping containers do come in 20-foot units, but we currently have it sized for also either two 20-foot units phased or one 40-foot unit if it was installed in one phase. So the plumbing, the, the water service, the electrical and the sewer service would all be part of that initial, like, that phase one cost. All of the infrastructure could be brought in. And it's just a matter of, do we have the funding to then, you know, create the footings, you know, grade that area, you know, and land those, those units. But they're fully, yeah, they come with all the fixtures and all these things. It's, they're, they're, they're not built custom onsite. They're delivered with those and then, then plugged in.
And then wastewater goes through our wastewater system?
Yep. So we, we have the design for a sewer and water tap specifically for this site. So that's all new infrastructure. There is a potable water tap for what currently irrigates the turf. All that would be new, the new irrigation, new electrical, new water and new sewer.
And then you mentioned their shipping containers, but they aren't going to be finished as shipping containers. They'll look like a finished building?
So that's, that's what the screen element is for. So the shipping container would, you would have doors on the front of the shipping container for all of the stalls. So essentially, the front of it would look like a bathroom. And then the back of it is, is designed to have a sort of a decorative screen wall. And the slatted design that was sort of designed for the, the shade structures is actually wrapped around that container. So the part of, the full build out of the design would actually sort of enclose the not as pretty side of that.
Okay. All right. And then the, Mr. Keen, if you could go back to the slide we were on for, yeah, if you go back one, thank you. In the, on the Curio side there, in the upper like left side, there's three gold looking boxes. And then there's similar ones there on the McCulloch side. And far right, what are those?
So if you flipped to the next page, essentially, all of the picnic area type seating that, that represents, those are, those are sort of picnic table seating. That's all been moved to one side. And we have benches that actually come around that south side now. But the, the focused area with festoon lighting that's over the top with picnic tables is at that north, northwest corner. So yeah, the, the rendering is a, is a little earlier iteration than, than what you see in this diagram.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other comments for members of the council before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? If so, just make your way to the, yeah, please just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams on the timer. A green means you have your time, yellow means one minute remaining, red means-
Hi, I'm Kelly Lutz. It looks beautiful. I think it's going to be a great thing, especially it is-
I think it's going to be a great thing, especially it is natural turf, right? My question had to do with the landscaping, is that included in the, in the budget, all the trees and everything that will add to the cooling effect in the shade of that area?
Yeah, so the.
Chad, if you'd just get to that microphone, please, thank you.
So in the initial budget, we would have to phase the landscape, but if we were able to also include the Arizona Parks Grant, the full landscaping and irrigation could be installed, which would not, would be all of the trees and even that sort of buffer landscaping we talked about along the wash.
Excellent.
Hello, David Diaz, is, is the grant that Mr. Vice Mayor Lane mentioned, is that something that's a done deal or is that something that we've applied for and we're still waiting to get an answer from?
It's like 90% done deal, but I'll let Mr. Keen maybe give the specifics.
Yeah, we've had two iterations with the Arizona Parks and Trails Board, both approval on that. So now we're waiting on the National Park Service to approve the project as those are federal dollars that come to the state, then the state disperses. So as the mayor said, we're about 90% sure that we're going to be able to get that grant.
I think that's a brilliant move to do it that way, to get that extra funding, because I was at the original Parks and Rec meeting and there was a, it was a firm budget of $1 million and we used $187,000 for Diggs Incorporated. So I think that's a great idea. Second thing is I highly, highly recommend, the other thing David mentioned, was to, to reach out to the stakeholders, the business owners on McCullough, because I've personally walked up and down McCullough and they have not been contacted. And I think that visiting their businesses would actually help, you know, don't just wait for a meeting from them, they come to a meeting, they work, they work at night, they have families to go to, just go walk in and they're more than willing to talk to you to get their, to get their feedback, just the point.
Thank you. Oh, we have more. Yeah, I think Mr. Parrott, did you?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is John Parrott. I live at 2490 Lima Drive. I'm in the commercial real estate business and I do own property on McCullough Boulevard within a block and a half of this. I was a small part of the Vision 2020 group, but I was really proud to be invited to the town hall meeting that was at ASU and 350 people all came together and debated these different projects and, and Cal and of course Mayor Nixon were the driving force of this. But this was absolutely the number one project, which is why it got 50% of the funding. And I think there's so many benefits for ASU's development, for the downtown area. I'm, I'm kind of one of those people that thinks you get 80% of the results with 20% of the effort. And I mean, this is all kind of a little too much effort for me. I would have just put up a stage like they did in Flagstaff and called it done, but the, but it's a beautiful project. So, and on another topic, let me just say, I'm proud to live in a city that doesn't charge sales tax on groceries.
Would anyone else like to address the council on this?
Good evening, Frankie Lyons, resident here in 19 years. My question is, in some of the other bids that I've seen that have been done, they don't seem to be inclusive of everything. It seems like somebody's coming back adding lighting or they're adding something else. Does this bid include everything, including the lighting for this project? Or is this something that's going to have to come back and ask you guys for more money?
Yeah, thank you for the question. It actually just depends on the phase and which the direction that the council gives. Mr. Knutson?
Mayor, appreciate the opportunity, council. This is, so just where we're at right now, this is, there's been no bid, there's been, this is what we're talking about right now is a 90% design. And then we hire a cost estimator through Diggs Studios, identify what we project as the cost for the, for the project. So then, then next step, so wherever council, mayor, council that you direct the city team to move, move towards, we would then take that number based on the cost estimates, put it in the budget. And then, and then after July 1st, we'd put out a proposal and get some hard bids and at that point enter into a contract with a contractor to construct whatever the vision of the council and the community would be at that time. So no bids have been received, these are cost estimates and that I think we've done a pretty good job, both by the cost estimator, by, by Diggs Studios. Mike Keen, you've been working with the, the project managers and the city engineer team to identify some cost-saving aspects and make sure that the, all these costs would be reflective of what we think a bid would be. And in fact, there's been some, some inflation, if you will, tied to this, this project. And so we're hoping maybe some of those costs would actually would, would go down. But just want to make sure that that's out there. There's been no bids received. This is what we're, what staff is seeking tonight is a direction on the number that we want to put into the budget that we bring back to council for, for approval.
Thank you.
One comment to respond to the comment that was made. So we just happen to have this up here in terms of being able to install the colonnade. I've referred to the colonnade a few times. And I apologize to anyone who's not familiar with some of the other 3D graphics and things that we had in the past for, when we were going over the concept. But the idea of a colonnade that supports those shade structures is that it's multifunctional. So a lot of times you'll have a shade structure over here, but you'll still need to have lights along the pathway and power installation in other places. We tried to come up with a design that could be the most efficient to have all of those installed at once. And it actually has the ability so that the columns that will eventually support those shade canopies are the lighting, are the power, and they actually have the most efficient layout so that we can provide power in multiple locations instead of just at one stage. So lots of different types of events, lots of different uses can actually benefit from that. And so that's, that colonnade would actually provide all of that lighting. It really is a matter of, you know, the shade canopies and how those potentially might get implemented or phased. But our goal is to get that colonnade installed so that all of the lighting and power and infrastructure would be part of this initial installation.
Yeah, thank you.
Don Wisdom, Mayor and Council. The concept, I think, looks really nice. The only thing I'd like to see is a artist's concept of what it's going to look like from the street vertically, what the poster is going to look like, what the stage is going to look like and things like this doesn't really show me an awful lot in that respect.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Do we have any of those types of drawings, Chad? Looking at the property from street view?
Yes, we, this, this was, these diagrams, this slideshow here was specifically just to present sort of a phased approach and be a, an outline of the way that the scope is, is lining up with the funding. But we actually have a 3D model with the, with full sort of concept renderings of these. I believe that package was actually part of, again, the earlier Parks Board meeting that we had in 2022, but we can send that back to the city and make it available for the public. I think it'd be good to refresh everybody's memory as we've gone through this process to, to look at all those, those views again.
Yeah, that'd be great if we can get that on the website for, for citizens to take a look at.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Ms. Toy, did you have some comments?
Hi, Kelly, it's Bonnie Toy. Still short. Yes, really funny thought was, why don't we just concrete the whole thing, throw it in a bathroom and call it done? But I did have a question about the shade thing. You know, at the high school and at Bashes, they have the solar panel thing. Wait, yes, the solar panel things. And I was wondering if they were going to make those, if that kind of thing was possible and at what point do you ask that question? And then again, I know I asked last night about security cameras and making sure that you guys are thinking ahead. You know, that's a really interesting area downtown where people are, you know, spring break, hang out. Have you seen the lighthouses lately? They're really pretty. Sometimes people color on them. I really hate for your bathrooms to get colored on and then you're not going to be able to find who did it if you don't, aren't prepared with security cameras. Solar panel shading, think on that.
Yeah. Chad, do you want to answer about solar panels, if you gave any thought to that?
So last, last architects have definitely looked at that in terms, and I think the main driver with the current design is cost and, and sort of that initial capital cost of installation for those kind of things. We actually did talk during the design phase with the city's project team about, you know, just like sort of looking for opportunities like the Arizona Parks Grant, you know, what's out there in terms of support for, you know, that type of installation on armature like this. So that's definitely something that I think would be possible with funding with this particular structure without, you know, too much redesign. One of the things, again, with sort of that efficiency of the colonnade system is that we are able to, with that, that ring trenching that has everything in it, easily put extra conduit into that. And so if we, you know, bring power and lighting to these, we can also bring extra conduit. And I'm not sure if the city has plans for security cameras or other types of things to be brought in here, but having those conduit for future expansion in a system like this is, is pretty easy and cost effective to do, to allow those things to happen in the future without tearing a bunch of stuff up. So that's definitely something that Wright Engineer, the electrical and lighting consultant on our team, does, did consider when looking at sort of the design for these kind of columns and bringing all the infrastructure to them. So having that available for expansion in the future is definitely possible with this design. We just don't have any plans right now for cameras.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else like to address the council on, on this item?
I'm special though.
No. What an opportunity, Mr. Wisdom, you, you are special and we appreciate you being here.
Hello, Mayor and Council, James Gray with the Partnership for Economic Development. It was my pleasure to lead the Vision 2020 team. And I think one of the focus of all the people that participated, and there were many throughout a two-year process, was creating what we like to call in economic development, a third space. And so many times, we live in an A-to-B world, like we start at home, we go to work, we go to work, we go to home. And so many cities spend tons of money to create spaces where you can go to a district. You're not going to one restaurant, you're going to that restaurant, maybe you can walk to this restaurant. And the city invested in, we'll call it Central Park, it has the best piece of property in all downtown. I don't think there's any debate on that. And I think with a lot of the great design work that's been done here, I think that it's going to showcase not only our downtown that's been growing, but it's going to allow the street to expand. So let me step back. About three or four years ago, we started First Friday with a generator in an alley, just trying to prove the concept of downtown and creating community with art and music. Last month, we had almost 60 artists and 55 local businesses that are involved. It's growing. And it's not just growing within the street, it's growing within the community that is utilizing it. I think that when we started it, I certainly understand now, not just as a person is trying to grow their downtown, but I understand it as a person that puts on events. If you have no power, no lighting, no restroom, you don't have anything. Like you have to go recreate that. I think what the design here is they've given the basis to start. And I think that, you know, for us, that's a, would be a great space for First Friday. But also it's going to be a great space for churches, yoga, afternoon, morning, night, for one person, for a thousand people. And, and the other thing that, the last thing I'll add is on the shade structures, we did a parking assessment in downtown about 10 years ago. We don't have this problem anymore. But when we got to the six o'clock hour of the parking designation, less than 10% of all the parking spaces were needed. You won't find that now because our downtown is growing non-stop. But one of the concepts, the gentleman said is, you need something to do at night and you need some lights on and you need people to come downtown. Don't forget, you're talking about the shade, but the lighting element that he has put in here means that our downtown is going to glow at night. So even if you drive through or you're going to an event, you will feel special because something is doing someone, some type of event in downtown. So I just applaud you that you're in a great value proposition for the tax dollars to move forward. And I just want to thank the work that they've done on the, I just urge you to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item?
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council. So just as a reminder, as Mr. Knutson had mentioned, what we're here today is to be able to give staff, specifically Mr. Knutson, a number for the budget. So where, where do we want to go from a budget perspective? Some of the adjustments that were talked about last night at the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting, some of the adjustments that were brought up by citizens here during public testimony and council feedback can be adjusted throughout that process, but this will allow us to place a number in the budget on how we want to do. From my perspective and what I'm hearing from, from citizens and users is I would do the full option. So it would be the entire option, that's what the recommendation is of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Unrelated to this item last night, Parks and Rec had, had other discussions and they kept talking about just do it right the first time, like we did with Cypress Park and we did with Skate Park and some other examples that they gave. We had lots of public engagement throughout the process of, of this particular item, starting all the way back with the Vision 2020 when, when we started this. Again, we can revisit this should elements of the budget not come together that allows us to do this, so this still can happen from that perspective. And then we can revisit some of these adjustments that we are talking about with placements of, of trees or electrical or, or double-sized bathrooms or all of those pieces later. So from my perspective, the direction I would like to give would be, would be the full, which would be the $1 million from the ABC prize winnings, a $1 million from the Arizona Parks Grant if awarded, and then $900,000 additional from the, the general fund or other funds as we go through this budget process. But we need to have some sort of a starting point for Mr. Knutson. So with that, I'll open up to other comments from members of the council so we can give the, the team some direction.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Doyle?
I, I like it. I, I, my concern was in the beginning is we were going to spend too much money on the design for something architecturally that looked nice. And I think that's what we have and we have a lot of good features. I love the bathrooms, I love the lighting, I love the power. I just don't like that we have this great usable lot that we're now going down to 60% of the actual size in the middle. And I do agree, if we do it, we should do it, we should do it right the first time. But what I said in the very beginning, I wanted to stick with the million, original million dollar budget. I think it's great if we can get the Parks Grant, I'd like to see that. I don't feel we should be pulling any money out of the general fund. We have way too much other things that need attention to, to put in the park, especially, like I said, with, with just the design of the circle. I'd like to see, I love the bathrooms idea, I, I think we could do a lot with what we already have. And that's, that's what I was, under the impression we were going to be given this option, but also given an option to, you know, re-level the lot we have right now, put some shade in, put some bathrooms, run some power, but not go so architecturally pricey, I guess, is, is my concern. So those are the concerns that I have. Like I said, I'd like to stay within the budget we originally set and if we can get the additional $1 million, great. But my other concern is at that point, we're even not done, we have to put a, at some point, we, we want to bridge because we want people to use that parking. We haven't really solved any of the parking issues. Maybe we can do diagonal parking in front on McCullough there, maybe to add some spaces, but that's the complaint I'm getting. I've also had complaints that some of the businesses had signed up to be contacted and they weren't contacted. And that's, I was also the impression that what they were going to be doing is reaching out to local business owners, which I don't feel like they haven't. So like I said, I'm kind of a, very hesitant right now because like I said, I kind of said out in the beginning that I wanted to stay within budget and kind of just not spend too much architecturally. And I think that's what we're, we're spending a lot on that circle and the design and this. And we have a great, beautiful lot that we're going to be losing a lot of space. So that's my two cents.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments. Just for clarification, we've, we've never had a budget yet. So the $1 million is what the winnings were and that's what we're kind of using as the, the word budget, but we've never had a budget. And the direction that council gave was try and do it within the $1 million that we won, but also give us other options and that's where we are. we won, but also give us other options, and that's where we are today. So I don't want people to think that we're out of budget or not in the budget because it just has not been a budget yet until we're having this discussion, so. Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, thank you. I really like, I really like all of this. To me, this is an event space, and the original idea was that it's supposed to be a public-private partnership, you know what I mean? And so I understand Councilman Dolan's concerns about only using 60%, but in my mind, that other space is left in case we ever get a public interest in coming and maybe developing some commercial aspect of it. So I'm okay with the scaled-down version. I think you can still have a really, really good-sized events there. I love the natural barriers to help event organizers. I love the lighting, I love the, I have some concerns with the shade. If they're mechanical, have these been done before? You know what I mean? Or is this like a prototype that we got to now figure out how to work with moving forward? I really want to see design on these container restrooms, but I get all those are just down the road. I'm okay going full build-out on this because that is what I've heard from a majority of the citizens that I've spoke to is that they just want it done right, and they want it done well, and it needs to do what is originally intended, and that's drive, you know, be the catalyst for downtown and for events, and have that central gathering space that we can be proud of. And touching on the parking, that is the only thing that I think we, hasn't been addressed or hasn't been looked at, that I have heard from the Main Street Association and stuff like that, is parking. And diagonal parking has come up quite a bit. If we can find room to make that, I don't know if we have the room on the street or not, if we can build it into the design, I don't, like, I know we're at the 90% stage right now, but just to have some immediate relief for parking would be nice while we wait to see if that bridge is necessary, because I know that's a huge investment, and it might be nice if we can solve some of the immediate parking right now, and then as we grow this, prove the need for that bridge to go over to the other parking. But I think overall, it's a great job, great design, and I'm happy to move forward.
Yeah, thank you. And I believe, if I understand it correctly, the shade structures are stationary. It's just they're put in at different angles, stationary. Okay, so they are stationary, but the angle in which they're installed, yeah, each one's installed at different angles.
That is correct, yeah, they're not mechanical. That would get very worrisome and just the mechanics to run that.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This design is beautiful. I can visualize driving down the road, and it's lit up, and there's people, I can see all that, but my first concern, I would go backwards. I'd probably try and already get that bridge in place first with the original funds that we have, so that we can connect the park that we have already to the parking lot that we have, and probably put in bathrooms. That, I know I'm going to probably say that's completely different than this questioning here, but my other problem that I have with the budget for next year is I really, really believe that our Parks and Rec Department needs a higher budget to maintain some of the original facilities that we have from, because we're, keep expanding their scope, their job load, and I know that they're still having hard times even finding employees to fill this gap. And my concern is Rotary Park, and, you know, the trees are overgrown and the pathways that are starting to crack, and some of the benches there that are already starting to get sun-faded, we've talked about this before, my concern. So to go and say, we need an extra million dollars and maybe another million dollars to get the bridge in place, because I can see that to be a no-brainer, that's going to need to happen with all this. I mean, to me, that, that's just backwards to me. I would already connect the parking to the actual property. So at this point, I would only be looking at, moving forward, building the bridge and putting in bathrooms if possible, and saving that extra million dollars to give to the existing park programs to maintain some of the fixtures that they have now. I'm not saying I dislike any of this, I love it, but I think the timing is wrong, and I think we have other things that we need to take care of.
Thank you. Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, this is nothing like what I had envisioned when we first started this. However, I do like the concept, I do like the look. When we first started this project, and there was going to be some commercial buildings, although that grass area is down to 60%, it's still more area than what we originally had planned, which I think is a good thing. As far as how do we build it up now, or do we do some here, some there? The million-dollar grant we put in was specifically for this project, so if we don't do this, we don't get that million dollars. So that's something that we have to consider. The next thing is, this is an economic driver for our downtown area. You heard Mr. Gray, when we started First Friday, I was on the PED board at that time, and that whole idea behind that was to show that there is an economic reality to downtown, and that they, if we build it, they will come. And that's what's happened, to the point where those businesses that are downtown that are open in the evening have had to put on extra staff. So I truly believe that building this is going to help the businesses that are already there. I don't like the idea of spending an extra money out of the budget we put in for this grant, we've already bought the land, we have what's left over from America's Best Communities. However, I do want to move forward with the 100% group, and then when we come to the budget, if we, if it's, the costs are too high, we can scale it back at that time. But right now, we need to move forward with the full scope of it because that's what we heard the citizens want. And I heard from them last night, and the Parks and Rec Board has said the same thing, they want us to move forward with the full scope, and then as the budget comes and we actually start talking actual dollars, not just ideas, this is what we think it will cost, then we can scale back at that time. The only other thing that I would say is, we're at 90%. I think every single one of us up here have heard from people downtown that said, nobody contacted me, and that was part of the original scope. I remember, I said it, I want you guys to make sure you talk to all of the downtown business owners. And we've all heard from downtown business owners that apparently that didn't happen, or it happened the way you thought it would happen, but not the way they thought it would happen. So I would like you to go back and contact some of those downtown business owners so that the next time we have a discussion, we don't have those issues. So with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Coke?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As someone who, for a large majority of my time here, put on major events, I can, I agree with Councilmember Dolan, it's less space, but actually, when they take that down, it's going to alleviate so much stressors for people putting on events. This is so dangerous for people that are unsteady on their feet or handicap accessibility to get up onto the lot. So just to have the lot actually coming down to a space where all of the citizens can use it and feel comfortable using it will be a great thing and probably add some more space that we don't even see now because of the grading is going to be such a big deal. I agree with Vice Mayor Lane. I'd like to see us move forward with the full project and work on the budget as we go through that, but we're this far, and as someone who was at that town hall and been a part of this, I think we need to keep the momentum going.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Lane?
I agree a little bit with everybody what they had to say. This is a beautiful design. I don't think it's the best use of this space, the way that it's designed. I agree with Councilmember Dolan on that. I think there's some wasted space on here. I do understand it does look like a great place to hold events. Going forward, I'm not in favor of adding the additional million dollars out of our general fund. If we get the grant money, that's great. I'd like to see just a green spot there with bathrooms, and I think the bridge is really important. So that's about all I have to say.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so just a couple of thoughts on some of the comments that were made. The downtown business owners and property owners have had opportunity to engage as well, so we don't, you know, knock on everyone's door throughout that process. I mean, there's a burden for them as well. There are several of the business owners and association representatives and property owners in this room tonight, and I thank you for that, and I certainly, I wanted outreach as well, but we don't knock on everyone's door when we do something in someone's neighborhood. This project so far has generated at least 10 front-page news articles and multiple editorials, and so there are people engaged in the process. If we could do more, fantastic, I'm on board for that, but there is a burden for everyone to be involved in that process.
Mayor?
Councilmember Moses?
Point of clarification, because that's one thing, I really wanted to go to the Main Street Association meetings and get their feedback and get their priority list, and they're, they sent out emails updating everybody like, hey, this is going on, and when push came to shove, what's our priority list, what's important to us? And so they've done a lot to try and garner some attention and garner, you know, community support and get people behind it. So I think, I think there has been good efforts to make sure we try and include everybody. It's hard, you know, because everyone's busy, so can't meet everybody where they're at, but we certainly try.
Yeah, thank you. And then I also don't believe that this, it's this or that. I think through the budget process that, you know, we're hearing priorities from the community that they want park upgrades for the amenities we already have, there's some discussion about new park amenities that are going to be necessary. I've heard comments from members of the council on that during different parts of discussion, and I think those are all important in conversations we move forward through our budget process, and we talk about what those priorities are. And as I believe Vice Mayor Lane mentioned, I mentioned as well, that, you know, as these numbers come in firm, we might say, hey, we got to pull back on this, or we have to pull back on something else or do something a little bit different. I'm shocked at the number on the bridge, it's the first time I'm hearing that number today. I'm surprised it didn't fall off my chair, but I tried everything to stay on my chair, but I think we can work through some of those things on what that might look like. But from the feedback I've heard, Mr. Knutson, I believe you have the direction to move forward with the budget of the full amount, and then we'll have those discussions as it comes a little bit closer to it. So thank you, Chad, from Diggs, thank you, Mr. Keen, for your presentation and all your efforts on the outreach, and we look forward to hearing more. We'll now move on to item 7.2, which is discussion regarding the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. At the City Council Planning Session on February 1st, the council requested an item regarding the Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions to discuss better utilization of the boards and council expectations of the boards and liaisons. The Havasu City Code contains general information as it relates to all boards established by the City Council. The council has five established boards, those being Havasu Youth Advisory Council, Airport Advisory Board, Board of Adjustment, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and the Planning and Zoning Commission. The specific requirements and responsibilities for those boards are found within the code sections that were provided to you in your packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions, sorry. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Williams. Yes, during our planning session, as Ms. Williams mentioned, each council member had an opportunity to bring forward an item for future discussion at a future meeting. Councilmember Lynn, this was one of your items, so I'll turn it over to you for some opening remarks before we open it to the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for allowing this item to come before the council. I appreciate that we have the current boards and committees and coalitions in place. What I was hoping to accomplish with bringing this to the council is a way of better utilizing them. Basically, the three things I'd like to discuss with the council as a whole are, first, what specifically are the roles of the liaisons? Two, what are the obligations and expectation of the board members? And three, what is the staff's role with these boards? I think that these rules are not clearly defined, and therefore, we are not getting the best use out of them. Maybe our qualifications for these volunteer positions should have guidelines, maybe our staff member who leads these boards take on the initiative to educate the members on the board they're representing. For example, when a new board member takes a seat on the Parks and Rec Board, they get a tour of the Aquatics Center or the parks they're going to be giving input on. I've also heard in the past, having served on the Parks and Rec Board for the last eight years, that board members didn't always feel included in some of the projects, and the departments were often volatile after things were voted on by the council or decisions were already made by staff. So I feel that if people are volunteer their time to be on a board, they want to know that their worth is being there. As a liaison, I think it would be a benefit to have the liaison from each and every board report on what is going on within these boards, commissions, and committees at every council meeting. We could move it up to after 6.2 council communication on the vacancies on these boards, commissions, and committees that Ms. Williams reads out at every council meeting. To be honest, I'd like to know what is happening with the Havasu Youth Advisory Council or the Board of Adjustments. Even if there is nothing going on, it would be great to at least give an opportunity for an update. This not only shows value on these boards, commissions, and committees, but it shows a commitment from us council members as a liaisons on them. And with that, I'd like to hear what other council member's thoughts are regarding these roles.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this item forward. Do any members of the council have any initial thoughts or comments? Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor and council, I do. I, when she, Councilwoman Lynn brought this to my attention, I really didn't understand which direction until I started to dig into it a little bit further as she did. And just even reading what the responsibility of the liaisons were, including coordinate semi-annual presentations on the activities of a board or commission at a council work session, other things that I learned when I dug into the word even liaison was facilitate a close working relationship between the people and the organizations. And then I've had other discussions that were, the liaison's not supposed to be that involved with the board or give the board's directions, while other times I've been told I can vote on a board, and then sometimes I can't vote on a board, and sometimes I do want to give direction, and am I just there to announce what the council is up to or what we think about? So it really, when, I didn't understand why we're going to be discussing this until I kind of dove into it, and then I realized we aren't utilizing our boards as well as we should. I reached out to a couple staff members, and I realized that there has even been direction from certain boards. Let's just say the board members had come to a conclusion that they were supposed to come back to the council, come back to the council for further discussion, and it was never ever even brought back to us, and they felt unheard. So since this came up, I've been diving into different locations, figuring out, what did Councilmember Lynn want from this? And I find that she is correct. I would like to see us discuss the boards, what we do in the boards, I'm even guilty of it. I'm not doing it as well as I should be doing, and a lot of it is just probably not knowing the direction of what we would like to be doing. I do like the idea of moving it up to the 6.1, because I will admit, there has been some really long meetings here, and when it comes down to it, I'd have to say that I've been guilty of, no, all boards are great, you know, because you're just ready to kind of go home. It's been a long, tedious evening or day, or even for the staff. So my concern for this is, couldn't we get more engaged with our boards? Can we, are we allowed to give them any direction of what the council is thinking? What is really our full job? And I thought, am I on the right track for facilitating, creating communications, bringing them back to the council, so that both the boards and the council members are facilitating together for what the people want? I hope I made sense.
Yeah, no, thank you. Any other comments or questions? So I have a little bit of experience, I was the airport advisory liaison for four years before I became mayor. So my term as council, I was the airport advisory liaison, there's a little bit of separation from some of the comments I've heard already. So we have five boards, committees, and commissions of the city that we're talking about today, of which two are, take action, and which becomes before the council, that's the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Adjustments. Board of Adjustment's a little bit different, like, man, it happens maybe once a year, if even that, but it's a quasi-judicial board, and then Planning and Zoning, anything that they do comes back before the council for the most part unless code says that they handle something. So there is no liaison there because their actions come before us, they make recommendations to us based on that. So it leaves us the Havasu Youth Advisory Council, the Airport Advisory, and Parks and Recreation. Again, I'm only going to speak on behalf of my experiences, the airport advisory liaison. I was liaison, I basically would sit and I would give direction to the board based on what the council direction was, which could be a tricky situation, because something might come up, and the council might not have given direction to the board to talk about that, so I would have to come back and give an update. I spent most of my time, though, directing traffic. You know, that's not on the agenda, we need to wait, and if you want that on agenda, we have to have that. You know, that's not on the agenda. We need to wait. And if you want that on agenda, we have to have that in the future. We're not prepared to talk about that because it's not on the agenda. We need to do some outreach on that. Maybe that's something we have to work with the staff with. So I did a lot of directing traffic was my role as liaison. And then I would bring back issues. During my time on the airport advisory, there weren't a whole lot of, of issues. We had, I believe, maybe hot fueling or Vice Mayor or Councilmember Dolan, you maybe got hot fueling after I left. But, but we had a couple of things that we needed some council direction for. But I basically was that liaison between the council and the board. And again, the board serves at the pleasure of, of, of this group, of the council. So, you know, there are times, I absolutely appreciate what Councilmember Lynn said where, you know, the council makes a decision and we never even asked for the board approval. One of the, the ones that I can most recently think of is the fee structures. So in, in December, Ms. Olson came to this board and said, or came to the council and said, hey, inflation's doing some crazy things. Do we want to do an across the board increase of around 14%? The board said, yeah, do, do that. Put that math together. Let's see what that looks like. They did that because that was the direction of, of the, the council. The, the staff came back with us and hey, this is what this looks like. In a first read, it was adopted by, by first read and subsequently adopted in its final read. But because council said, yes, do that in December, it never was sent to airport advisory or to any other impacted advisory board because the council superseded that. There wasn't the staff that did that. We gave that direction. And so we need to, to understand and recognize if that's what we're doing, that's, that's what we're doing. I don't, I'm not saying anything was wrong happened. That's just the process of what occurred in that, in that instance. So and then I believe Councilmember Lynn mentioned, you know, how the board members get on. We recently changed that process because we were having really fantastic applicants for all of our boards and coming forward. And, you know, they would awkwardly get up to the microphone and say a couple of words. And then someone would make a motion and, and we would approve it. And so instead we went to an interview process, which the interview panel includes someone from Ms. Williams' office, someone from the staff liaison, depending on the department, myself or my designee, and then the liaison, the council liaison. So it's, it's a panel of anywhere from three to five people that we ask the same three questions, just to keep it fair. And, and I believe those are in our council communication. And then we bring forth a recommendation. We just recently changed that to try and make that more effective. I, I think it's worked. I, I think it's, it's been a good change. Maybe the questions could be different. I don't know about that, but, but I do like the ability that we're actually able to engage and have a conversation with the potential applicants and understand what motivates them and they understand what motivates us. So I think that was a positive change that we made. But the other boards, so talking about having in item six where we talked about it early on, I'm not opposed to it. The only thing is it's kind of weird because we have just our, those three boards that we have liaisons for that we would put there. And then we'd have our meeting and then we'd have board updates at the end for the boards that were on for some other reasons. So like the Chamber of Commerce or the Golic Havasu or PED, those are, those are different roles. So we're liaisons certainly, but either some of them are contractual, some are just, hey, yeah, we'd love to have an outreach from, from the council to be a part of it. Others are just kind of an FYI, we're glad to have you here. And some are just historical, like we don't have to be on those, those areas. I happen to be on many of those boards. I don't always have an update every, every meeting. So there's just not action for me to give an update each, each time. So, so those are my thoughts, just based on what we've heard so far. Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to Councilmember Lynn for bringing this up. I agree with you. I could do a better job bringing this forward and I will strive to do that in the future. As far as bringing it up and, and moving it up, I'm not a big proponent of that and only because we meet twice a month and most of these boards we sit on, we only meet once a month. So there's going to be times that we don't have any update to bring up. So why don't we just leave it where it is? And as, as members of the council strive to do a better job of informing each other and, and informing the, the citizens of exactly what we're doing on these boards. Those are my thoughts.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
If I could touch on even the city boards, you know, being with the airport advisory board for the last four years, there is a little bit of a confusion of, of, of an identity of what the boards do. If you're on the airport advisory board, well, I'm going to be on board. We're going to talk about the airport. Or I'm on the Park and, Parks and Rec Board, we're going to talk about everything Parks and Rec. But it's more of an advisory board to the council. So for example, with the airport, we want to, there was a question about hot fueling. Can they fuel the, according to our code, they had to shut the planes off. They're not allowed to have the planes running while they're fueling. Well, that's with the military. We can't do that. And a lot of airports, you know, of course, definitely allow that. We just didn't have it in our code. It's something that we as council members don't know a lot about. So then we push it back to the advisory board where, you know, hey, you guys are experts in, in aviation. Why don't you let us know what you think? And then they make a recommendation, yeah, that's a normal thing. They do it everywhere. It's no big deal. Yeah, we agree. You know, we vote. That's something that would, would, so it's supposed to be things that come to the council for a vote. If it's, hey, I think we should paint the, the, the hangars yellow or we should do this or the, at the, at the parks, we should put up lockers, you know, so they can have stuff. That's not really a council decision that we would ever make. That's more of a staff decision. And sometimes you get those boards that they, they want to get in, I want to do everything Parks and Rec or I want to do everything airport where that's not the realm of what council does. Council would make the 30,000 foot decision. So I think that's where, you know, I've learned over the last four years and I know Councilmember Lynn, I talked about that. We're trying to bring our boards in where, like I said, if, if it's an issue of, you know, we, we brought up the, the runway closures. That's something we talked about. And the problem is that the airport advisory board, there's just not a lot of airport things that come before council to vote on that we need decisions to be made. So a lot, we, we don't have a lot of airport advisory board meetings. And because of that, you know, in the, in the past, they, I want to bring up, I want to talk about this. I want to talk about that. Well, that's more of a staff decision. That's not something that council would do. So if that kind of just gives some clarity, sometimes the confusion of those boards, they're there to advise the council when council needs request advisory. So.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
I would agree with that, that assessment. There, there is some confusion on the boards about what their role is. You know, they are the experts and they're just supposed to tell us, hey, does this fit within industry standards kind of deal? Not necessarily. So I, I think there is some confusion and maybe a, an orientation of source would, would be, you know, very beneficial for some of these boards. Every board is different, right? And so to have the one overarching, hey, these are the rules kind of deal. It's like, well, I agree, like I've been on two different boards and one I was a voting member and one I'm not kind of deal. So the, the, but, but they're independent entities and they have their own guidelines, their own rules that, that we're just there to follow. And, and, and I'm contractually obligated to be there as the council liaison because it's in the contract we have with them. So I'm okay with the differences. I don't think there's a whole lot to do here other than maybe just an orientation of, of what really we need from them, what, how they can best serve their community kind of deal. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Cole?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I don't have much to say to add to, other than what's already been said. I mean, yeah, I agree with Councilmember Moses. An orientation's good. I'm, I don't have any real issues. So I'm comfortable with the direction, however we go.
Okay. And Ms. Williams, I believe you, do you do an orientation or do the, the department liaison? Really, it's only the two, or I guess Havasu Youth Advisory, Airport Advisory and Parks and Rec.
Yeah. So when new members are appointed to positions, we do an orientation training. That is usually done in person once a year. For those that are appointed mid-year for vacancies that occur, we do have that video that is recorded. So they get a copy of that to watch and then they have a handbook as well.
And then is there, does the department director, maybe Mr. Knutson, maybe the department director, especially like Parks and Rec, they could, you know, take them around, a tour of our facilities or same with the airport, a tour of, of the airport facilities. Most of the airport folks are users, but, but thoughts on that?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Sheehy, members of the council. Yeah, that, those conversations take place. A new board member is going to come in. There's an orientation process. A lot of people don't quite know what their role is when they come in. So there's a, a big picture provided by the clerk's office and by Kelly Williams. And then each department staff liaison will have some one-on-one conversations. There's a lot of emails that go back and forth between the, the staff liaison and the board and commission members, whether new or, or existing, and some one-on-ones, emails, phone calls. So all those communications take place on a, an ongoing basis and certainly on the, on the onset.
Yeah. So through this conversation we have today, can you direct your staff to make sure that they have a more in-depth, not just emails and informally, but obviously the three different, or actually the fourth, because P and Z should have, have one as well. The, all four of them are going to look different, but they'll have an orientation that's in-depth. So they are very clear in what it is we have to offer and what we do.
We can always do a better job.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
And that might be definitely a good idea because I know we did that two years ago when we had a whole new group of people come on the advisory board. We met at the Aquatics Center and we had, we explained, you know, like I said, gave some of the examples. You know, we don't decide we're going to paint the terminal yellow. We decide that, you know, we talk about the, the hot fueling and things like that. And I think it was a good, it was a good start for everybody to kind of understand what we do and how we do it. And it was good that I was there and it might be good, you know, if the other council members want to come as well. And they meet the council and they, they kind of understand the role. Also too, a lot of them didn't understand that they, because they're an advisory board to the council, they are also have to operate within the
Open meeting?
The open meeting laws as well. So and how to do that, you know, don't reply to all emails and things like that. And so I think it was a very good informative for us with a lot of new people that started. It really helped us. Now, we haven't had a lot of meetings since then, but I think that was, it was a good start. Maybe it's something we do at every annual, we do an annual meeting of the board, you know, we meet here. We, maybe the city attorney can come and give a little update on open meeting law, a thing like that. And just, like I said, just kind of just let everybody know what it is we do and how we do it and expectations. So like I said, that definitely helped.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
One final thought. In this, it did, this is our, our City Council Liaison Codes, Roles and Duties of the City Council Liaison. I did really like where it said coordinates, coordinate semi-annual presentations on activities of the board or the commissions at council work sessions. So that would literally the liaison maybe encouraging the chairman of these boards to come in maybe once or twice a year, all boards, not just the ones that, that are our city boards, but all of them. Just giving us all a brief update or what they're excited about so that we can all be due diligent on and make them feel more involved and engaged with us would be good. And I do agree with Vice Mayor Lane that maybe bi-weekly updates are maybe too much. And we, you know, push it back to once a month, just so that we can make sure we have the time in our agenda to do a thorough, thorough update of what the boards are doing and feel that they can be engaged, encourage them to join us. I know that we have so many staff members sitting back here, listening to all of our council meetings for hours and hours and hours. And then I see some of our, and I'm going to excuse that Damian, he doesn't show up. So how, he really depends on the liaison to give direction or what. And I understand, Councilmember Dolan, what you're saying though, is not everything there has anything to do with council. But I, I, as a city council person, I am interested in all the boards and what the liaisons are doing and how they're facilitating together.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell, can you tell, where are you reading that? Is that in our, our council packet? I just want to make sure.
It's part of
Is it, that counts?
It's council liaison. It's just not on, it's on our website. It's on our
Okay, not included in the packet this evening or, okay?
It's just, it's basically if you go to your, what is the job of the council liaison on our website?
Okay.
No, it's not. It's just, you know, this, what is?
Yeah. If you could just send that through Kelly Williams so that Ms. Williams can send that out to the council. So we all have that information. That'd be helpful. Yeah.
Yeah, was it sure?
Yeah, no, perfect. That'd be great. Yeah, Ms. Williams. Sure. Perfect. Thank you. All right. So based on Councilmember Lynn's three talking points is expectations of board. I think we, we talked that through based on having orientation from Ms. Williams' office plus dedicated orientations through the department, roles of the liaison. And my expectation would be a traffic control person for, for our, I'm just talking about the city ones because there, there's contractual obligations on some of the other boards. But, but these five of the city or the three of the city that we're talking about would be to direct traffic. Is that what everyone else's understanding is? And is agreeable to that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Lane?
So with, with that, and I, I listened to a little bit of last night's meeting. So with clarification on what you're saying about being that patrol person. And I'm, I'm really asking this in all honesty. I'm not trying to like stir up anything. But Vice Mayor Lane had asked the board to come up with a name for the park during last night's meeting. So is that the kind of direction you're wanting the liaison to do, that type of thing? Like to, I just wonder where that's coming from when you say you're trying to patrol things or are they giving direction? I just want to know what that role looks like. Because when I was on, the, I didn't know I was allowed to do things like that. So that's why I think I was trying to get where the clarification is and what, what our roles are.
Yeah, thank you. I, I'll turn it over to you, Vice Mayor Lane. I, it was a, it's a four hour meeting. I'm, I'm into hour three so far of
Oh, that's okay. It was a long meeting. And when I asked them that, it wasn't giving them the direction to come up with a name. But to start thinking about that, because sooner or later, we're going to have to come up with a name for it. And since they have taken the lead on so much, I wanted them to, to start thinking about that. Not necessarily for them to come up with a name because the citizens of the city should be the ones coming up with the name, not just the board. But I'd like them to come up with an idea for like a contest or something to that effect. And, and when we get to the committee reports, I'll talk more about some of the, the things I talked about last night in the meeting.
Yeah. And to answer your question, Councilmember Lynn, engaging the board in, in aspects of what the council's involved with. So is that offensive to me? No. I mean, it's, it's obviously going to be a decision of, of a public process of some sort that will come through us as some, some component. So as long as we're directing traffic within kind of the confines of, of what it is we're doing. I mean, many of you have seen some of my conversations I have at coffee with the mayor. I always talk about the will of the council and that's basically, for example, tonight, I would say the will of the council was to budget for, for the full phase of, of doing the downtown catalyst. That's just the will of the council at this point. We still have moving pieces that we talked about that will come together. But that's the direction that we gave today. So as long as we're working within those confines as a liaison, I would say you're within your purview of what my expectation was. It looks like by the nods of heads here that, that the council agrees with that.
Mr. Mayor, I would just say too, and that it can be a gray area. Our, you know, our job is to facilitate the meeting, kind of keep everybody in bounds, make sure we're talking about, you know, things. Like I said, I think the way Vice Mayor Lane explained it, yeah, it's a good way, you know, because it's, you're, you're just talking about the discussion. We just need to be careful not to give them any specific direction because we as individual council members, once again, don't have any official authority. We have the authority of the council. So if the, if, if we had voted at one meeting, this is what we want to do. And then we're the liaison. I could say, council has directed that we would like you guys to give us this information. We can say that. But we, I need to be very careful that I don't give direction individually to them because I don't have that authority. I'm there to, no, no, come back over here, you know, let's, we, we can't talk about that because that's a, you know, we can put that on a future agenda item, but that's, you know, kind of just explain some of the, the open meeting laws and then things like that. But we, we just do, we do need to be careful with our opinions because we can't represent, we can only represent our opinion. We can't represent the council and give any permission with our authority. So.
Yeah, no, thank you. Yeah, that's, as a, as a member of one of the liaison of one of those boards, it can be very tricky to find that balance. So, yeah, it's a great reminder. And then the last point from my notes, based on your, your opening remarks, Councilmember Lynn, was the staff's role. I'll, I'll just go and say that it's, it's kind of awkward for the staff because Mr. Knutson reports to us and then everyone else reports to him. But yet we have council liaisons working alongside his staff at these meetings without Mr. Knutson there. And we have a contractual obligation to Mr. Knutson and, and code, city code obligation to fulfill. And so staff's role is very, very delicate. So they're, they're trying to balance the needs of the community and their individual boards as well as the, the will of the council because it's a council-appointed board. And so it gets, it gets very awkward. And so I would just caution all of us that are in that position that we, we recognize and understand that and respect the, the contract we have with Mr. Knutson and obviously city code in which, which we are responsible for, for upholding while we're doing those duties and give some grace to the staff when they're going through that process. And, and certainly if there's any, any tips or tricks that you might have by being an extra set of eyes in the room, feel free to work through Mr. Knutson to, to share, to share that information with him so he can help his team in, in the way that he can. So I danced around that and I'll, should look to Mr. Knutson just to, since they are your team members. If you have any thoughts on that as well.
No, that makes a perfect sense. And I think some of the conversations about our boards and, and commissions is that they're recommending bodies to the council, right? So a lot of times as staffs, we have, we have conversations on a couple of different regards. And one of those is that we want to hear the ideas coming from the Parks and Recreation Board members, the airport board, and all of our board, boards and commissions about some of their thoughts regarding some of the, the operational and the day-to-day. We just, we want to, we want to engage them and have conversations. We're, we're not, and as staff, we're not taking direction. And there's not a vote to take place to say we need to have vending machines in the, in the parks or those types of things, right? But so it, it does get tricky and, and making sure that we're, we're listening and But so it, it does get tricky and, and, uh, making sure that we're, we're listening and, and, um, because we know they're the experts in terms of that, that border commission. And we would treat them like the experts and there's residents that approach them with different ideas and, and, and that's, that's a good thing. So, um, there's a lot of those type of conversations that we try, we try to balance. They're, you know, they're, they're not guiding operations. They're, they're recommending body to the, to the council, but we still want to engage them and get ideas and, and, uh, and work from, uh, from that regard too. So, um, yeah, um, i- in the end, it's a trying to find value, uh, for our boards, commissions. We have lo- I have lots of conversations with our staff liaisons. In particular, uh, you mentioned mayor about the planning and zoning, they had, they have their own set of rules, right? So the, the state statutes, our city code guides the, the actions that go before that, uh, that, that commission. With the other ones where there's airport or Parks and Rec in particular, we, I have lots of conversations about, okay, so how do we engage them in some of the decision-making process? And in, uh, years past, uh, um, Mike Keen's done a wonderful job of, of identifying certain funds within the budget and saying, you know what? Uh, we, we have some funds that we can do to improve one of our, one of our parks. Um, here's five or six different ideas. Uh, as a board, which, which one do you, uh, which one do you recommend to us for to move forward with? So, um, those don't, they're not statute requirements. They're not in our code. But we, we're finding ways as, uh, with staff to, to engage our boards and commissions to get, um, some, some input from them. So those are, uh, a few thoughts that I have and hopefully that makes some sense.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell.
Dolan brought up a good point. Um, and I would love to ask in front of everybody, how much can we individually engage with the board members? And then how much do you play as the liaison that you come back and give direction? Not that, can you ever engage as an individual? Does that make sense? Like one-on-one, this is my opinion, you're engaged in a great conversation around a table with people. And it's just your own personal opinion? Or do you really have to hold back because you cannot be the voice of everybody up here, obviously? And because we don't, I don't know what any of you guys are thinking about on a lot of discussions that we have within those rooms.
Yeah, no, great question. Uh, thank you for that. So, uh, you would have to hold back. So we, we don't get to be individuals. We, I, I'm not Cal. I'm, I'm the mayor and I'm the mayor 24 hours a day. And so I have to be, I have to be careful in the conversations that I have and, and the things that, that I say, because I'm always speaking on behalf of the mayor. And so if there is, uh, a, a conversation that you're having at a board, uh, committee or commission, that's it. That's an organization that's going to give direction back to us. So we can't influence that discussion at that level for them to come back and give them our idea back to us. Which might not be the idea of the body, but an idea of one of us. Um, so it's best practice to, to not engage at all with individual members. Uh, we also want to, uh, uh, be, um, particular to the open meeting violations. I mean, they, they also have to uphold the, the open, uh, meeting violations or, or meeting with multiple members of a body. Uh, it's going to be giving us a recommendation, but if, if they're going to give a recommendation that's fair and honest to, to us without any influence from us. It's best that we don't participate in those conversations, um, as individuals. Now, um, if your, um, you know, cousin happens to be a member of the board, or that might be a bad example because it's a family member. But say it's a friend that you went to high school with, uh, happens to be on a board and, and you have regular lunches with that person and they're talking about something. And you've been, you know, lifelong friends. I mean, of course you're, you're not going to not know what they're thinking because that's what friends talk about is, there's things happening in their lives. But, but just be really, really careful not to, to give your own personal opinion or, or thoughts, or even just change the subject and talk about lots of other variety of things you can talk about with your friend. That aren't going to have to do with city business that is going to come before us as the council. So, um, I mean, that, that's the best practice. Does, does that make sense? Okay. Yeah, perfect. All right. I think, uh, on the items that you mentioned in your, your opening comments, Councilmember Lynn, that we covered the, the three takeaways, uh, did you have any closing comments?
No, I think we talked a little bit about that, what that process looks like with the orientation. I really think it's super important, like when you have the Parks and Rec, you know, new members that they know where the parks are. They know what the Aquatic Center looks like, people who are in the airport. I think it's really important and, and, and I didn't see that in the past. So I'm hoping moving forward that that, that happens. You know, some of the board members, I, I don't, I don't want to have a qualification thing, but if you have somebody that just moved here like 30 days ago. And they want to be on the Parks and Rec board, well, they're not familiar with where we got like for the downtown catalyst project and the process of what that looks like. So I don't know if that's giving them background. So I think when that interview process maybe happens, that maybe that should be a question like, are you aware of what's going on? Do you know what's going on with the pickleball courts? Are you aware of these things before you put them as a board member? That's the only thing. I just want to have that kind of communication, whether that's during the interview or orientation or whatever that looks like.
Perfect. Yeah. Yeah. So I mean, as, as the process, I absolutely hear what you're saying, Councilmember Lynn. So the interview happens and that, that interview panel makes a recommendation to the council, but it's the council that makes that final decision, whether they take the recommendation or not, or, or appoint others. Um, and another clarification is Ms. Williams said they do the training once a year. I just want to clarify why that is. It's because the, the boards have terms and they end on June 30th and then they start July 1st. So, um, and then we have another midterm if somebody, um, resigns for some reason or, or can no longer serve. She's able to, to do it at that time as well. But I, I think point, point well taken. So I think the liaison can help make sure, um, and hold accountable to, to what Justin and his team are going to do to make sure they're orientated coming in. All right. Any last comments from any other members of the council before we close? Oh, this is a public hearing. I'm sorry. So would anyone like to address, uh, the council on this item? All right. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing on this item. Any last, uh, comments for any members of the council? All right. We'll move on to item 7.3, which is approved professional services agreement for the design of the Site 6 boat ramp project with Kimley, Horn and Associates. And authorize the use of $67,530, $67,535 in American Rescue Plan Act funds. Uh, Mr. Wolf.
Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Yeah, Mr. Knutson.
Before, um, Mr. Wolf makes his presentation, uh, point of clarification or an option that council could consider, uh, in the, uh, council communication and the suggested motion. It talks about the, uh, use of ARPA funds for this project. We can, uh, ARPA funds is an option, but another option that council can, can consider and staff can, can move in that direction would be contingency funds. So that's, uh, that's another option that, that is available.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. Mr. Wolf?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight for the design services authorization for the Site 6, uh, boat launch ramp. Give me a little, give you a little context for anybody that, uh, is not familiar. Uh, the Site 6 site is out on the west end of the island in that photo on your left here. Then a little more context and closer view gives an outline of this purple line here is actually the city-owned property. So it is a city-owned, uh, launch ramp. Uh, Site 6, as I said, public boat ramp. The Site 6 boat ramp was developed with the apartments and the McCulloch Corporation Marine Products Test Center shop, uh, in 1960. And this is a 1960 circa picture, um, and is owned and operated by the Lake Havasu City. So, um, I think we all might want that Chevy at the boat ramp there. Uh, the, part of the, part of the replacement project is the seawall. And you can see it's been hit and damaged. The sidewalk has become severely damaged itself. You can see cracks and even, uh, the bollard, um, uh, swapped some yellow paint there with somebody. This, there's also some safety improvements involved, pedestrian railing. If you look at the bottom of that left picture, you'll see the sidewalk leading off to the edge of the boat ramp. Not well advised, although I have seen, um, lawn chairs sitting up there watching the activities at times. And it gives you an idea of the, the actual boat ramp grade, what you see looks, um, fairly, um, um, reasonable. Until you get about to the water's edge and it starts dropping off pretty quick at a different angle. And the picture on the left, if you can see, you can kind of see the discolored water there. And you can see the end of the concrete into that dark area. And then that dark area is actually a big depression and, uh, prop wash area. Uh, which as trailers drop down into the ramp, a wheel or two drop off that edge. It, it's not a problem. The boat definitely will get launched, but the truck, uh, pulling the trailer is having difficulty getting back out. It causes other problems and snarls everybody's operation trying to get out there. So, uh, I'll give you an idea here what this thing looks like. Uh, the red, uh, outlines the existing ramp and that prop wash scour area. And it's about 21% um, uh, ramp right there. It starts out fairly, um, um, reasonable, but then as you get, uh, further down, that trailer just drops really hard off the ramp. And then a lot of times it'll drop the wheel right off that drop off. So the new ramp design, uh, gives you an idea at 14%. And we were actually limited to 14%. I tried to get a little more through the core permit. And they wanted to limit our distance out into the lake. Uh, so we've got a, a 70%, 70-foot ramp out from that angle point up there. And then an additional 10 feet to, uh, work the bottom with some riprap and, um, uh, larger material. So that that prop wash will no longer, uh, wash the area out. Uh, the project funding, as, um, the city manager has outlined, we are requesting the ARPA funds for the design services. So that we can get underway this fiscal year. State Parks Lift Grant was approved by the council, uh, I think it was November 8th, I believe. And submitted and was awarded $800,000 for the replacement of the ramp and seawall. Uh, great job by the city's, uh, grant funding team, uh, getting this put together. And that also created a city CIP matching funds of 446,000. So total, we're a little over 1.2 million for the total project. And we've got the city's match funds being, uh, set up for allocation in the 2324 budget right now. Uh, that, uh, that's your resolution on the left. And then, uh, this is what we got for approval from the State Parks, uh, Board, uh, was there, they assigned a grant number and actually awarded the 800,000. Uh, so permits, uh, and environmental studies have been approved. That letter on your left is from the Corps to our, um, agent that works with us, uh, through the Corps. Uh, March, March 8th was that, uh, is that third? I think it's eighth. Yeah, sorry. That was, uh, approved. Uh, that was a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Nationwide Permit 3, which is classified for maintenance. Uh, the biological review is part of the Endangered Species Act compliance with the fish that habitat at the bottom of the lake in the area. And then we, we did provide a cultural survey report, uh, as required by the state historic, uh, preservation office. So those are all in place and ready to go. So our timeline right now is to work to get the design and construction documents, uh, April through June of this year. And then 100% bid documents in July, so we can go to award under the new fiscal year and funding. Construction, we'd sure like to get out there a little earlier just to be sure, but the boat is, boat ramp is in, uh, high operations. I'm going to say through September. We might be able to get the contractor out a little bit before October. But the October through December, uh, is a low water lake condition, which is part of our permit. So sooner than October 1st, uh, is not going to happen for in-water work. And, um, I can open it up for any questions or slide back to any slide that, uh, council may desire, uh, for further discussion.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Wolf. So I, I think this is a great project. I'm excited that, uh, we're able to, to do something in Site 6. So many residents, uh, use this area. Uh, a big thank you to Representative Biassucci, who really has worked hard to ensure the funding is secure for river communities, which the majority of this will be funded by. Mr. Knutson, thank you for the, the, uh, explanation at the beginning of this item to be able to use additional dollars. During this discussion, I would like the council to consider using the contingency funds, uh, over the ARPA. Just so we understand the, the reason ARPA is one of the solutions is, uh, I'm going to get my timeline off just a little bit. But in 2021, uh, when ARPA was, uh, first announced and, and distributed, there were several ways that you could spend the money. A lot of that's changed since then, but council had a, a discussion with Ms. Olson and we, we gave kind of an outline of, of how the dollars could be spent. The Community Resource Coalition, uh, infrastructure projects, Parks and Rec projects, so on and so forth. Uh, this falls under the Parks and Rec piece of that discussion we had over a year ago. That's why that was a recommendation coming forward from staff. But, um, I believe that based on conversations that we've had here at this council, that, uh, Mr. Knutson, through the budget process this year, is going to identify the ARPA dollars and where they're going. So everyone's very clear and, and we don't lose track of where they went or how they're going. Last year, we wanted to do that, but we were in the middle of the budget process during the ARPA, um, dollars coming in. It wasn't until April 1st that the, the 500-page document even, even went into effect and then the interim guidelines changed and such. So it's not as clear in this current budget, but going forward it will be, uh, which will identify all of those dollars. So for the purpose of the discussion, if, if you all agree, I would prefer we use, uh, contingency dollars, uh, for the balance of, uh, of this, which would be $67,535. If it was the will of the council to move forward. With those comments, does anyone else have any comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan.
Um, I'd like to see a phase two where they put bleachers in and then a judging table, like judges. And then like a penalty box. I think we definitely need a penalty box out there for, for people in timeout now. I think it's, like I said, I, as I was writing this, oh, we should use the SLIF funds and so we're using that. That's awesome. So, yeah, I think it's a great improvement.
Hopefully with the, the pitch, not that we wanted more, but hopefully with the change, we won't need the grading system as much as we, we do now. Hopefully that'll make it easier for.
Sometimes you need a winch at the top. You can pull down the, pull people out.
Hopefully it'll get a little bit easier.
We can work on that in design also. This is for a design award, so we'll get into a little more detail during the design.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other comments before we open the public hearing? Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree that we should be using contingency fund, not the ARPA funds. I also, this is a project that is for the, the citizens of Lake Havasu. Uh, we do a lot of things for the different tourist people that come here, but Site 6 is a Lake Havasu resident boat ramp. And it's free to our citizens. And I really believe that we need to move forward with this project. Once again, uh, as you said, the fact that we're, we're getting that, that grant, um, is awesome. And that's what we want to do. So, uh, I'm excited for the citizens to be able to use this, uh, boat ramp. And, uh, as you said, maybe change in that grade, it'd be nice if we could do a little bit better than 14%, but I understand those restrictions. But maybe we won't have so many people out there, uh, with their signs and their beer coolers on the, on the weekends.
All right. Uh, this is, this is, Councilmember Moses, do you have a comment?
I just actually can, sentiment that I too would like to thank Representative, uh, Biassucci on his work with the SLIF grant funds. He's done a lot of work on that and it's much appreciated. I think the sheer number of marriages he's probably going to save or, you know, uh, it's worth the money. So. And then I'd also like to say, I think this is a contingency fund project, uh, doesn't really align with ARPA dollars.
All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Yeah, please just make your way to the podium.
With the replacement of that seawall, is there any ability to move that wall and make the ramp a little wider? Even though, of course, the entry roadway right into it is adjacent to it, but it looks like you could even move that seawall and make the ramp even a little wider.
Yeah, Mr. Wolf?
Uh, we are really limited through the core permit and the permitting type. The core permit, uh, strictly prohibits expansion of the facility. And believe me, we tried, uh, we pushed our agent back and forth, tried to modify the permit. And, uh, had several discussions about that as well as the length of the ramp. And the best we could do was improve the seawall and that sidewalk. Maybe not with bleachers, but at least a safety rail. But it, they strictly prohibited any expansion activities that would have to fall under a different type of permit. And maybe more funding would be advised too, for sure.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wolf. And thank you for the question. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Dolan?
I'll try to make a motion. There's no suggested action, but I'll try to go from the item title. I move to approve professional services agreement for the design of the Site 6 boat ramp project to Kimley, Horn and Associates. And authorize the use of $67,535 in contingency funds.
All right. We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, uh, item 7.4 is approve amendment number one to the Engineering Professional Services Agreement for the North Well Field Improvement Project to Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and, and City Council. It's great to be here tonight. I didn't wear a sports coat. I didn't want to show my boss up, so I just got a tie on. The, the reason why I'm here tonight is to talk to you about the North Well Field Improvement Project Amendment uh that we're looking to do to the personal, professional services contract agreement with Jacobs Engineering. Uh, just to go over the, the purpose of this amendment is it's a, the project is part of an ongoing capital improvement project to improve the reliability of the water production in the north well field, which as all of you know, we have been striving to do for, for several, several years now. Um, Jacobs' scope of work is to design the upgrades to the electrical services, replace motor control panels, uh, the above-ground piping and, and some more things. Uh, this amendment incorporates also the help during the bidding process as we'll get uh questions asked by contractors uh looking for clarification on things. As well as uh during the construction, they'll be reviewing the uh RFIs that come in request for information. They'll be reviewing the uh submittals that come in as, as, as a lot of our consultant engineers do, who are the experts in these fields. Uh, this project's scheduled approximately 10 months, so we're hoping to get done quicker. But with that 10 months, um, we're looking at, well, it's going to be more like January of 2024. So I apologize for the slide being a little bit off here. As a reminder, the north field is there along the London Bridge Road, just where you'll find it. But it starts not too far off of industrial and it works its way towards um Palo Verde. This picture here, you'll see um some, some wells that we currently have. This project focuses on rehabilitating well 10, which is um located there at our Public Works Facility. I apologize for not having the new wells on this, which is well 22 in the Public Works Yard, as well as well 23 at the water treatment plant. But uh, we're going to be focusing on also well 14, which is just beyond the storage units that are out there, as well as well 15. Um, and then we'll be looking at well 18 some as well. So this is kind of an existing picture of the well, the sites. The equipment is older, the motors are older. Uh, that's a backup generator, if you want to call it that. Uh, we'll be looking at, 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 at what we can do with that. And just bring this, these three wells, four wells up to speed so that uh we can do maintenance on our horizontal collector well uh come uh this, this, this winter. So I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Hart? All right, uh, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
I move to approve amendment number one to Engineering Professional Services Agreement for the North Well Field Improvement Project to Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc. in the amount of $98,687.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane. We have a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item 7.5 is approve the cooperative purchase of a Bobcat E42R2 compact excavator from Clark Equipment Company, DBA Bobcat Company. Mr. Frosley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, members of council, good evening. Uh, Jason left a, a picture up for you. That's what we are hoping to get approval to purchase this evening. It's what, something we refer to as a mini excavator. Um, the Water Division currently doesn't own a mini excavator. However, the Parks and Recreation Department does. And they've been gracious enough to allow us to use that smaller machine. It's very versatile because of its size uh when we need the smaller uh machine. Uh, the demand for that machine is growing for both Parks and Recreation and ourselves. So because they own it, we've been renting a machine when, uh, for certain projects. That's getting somewhat expensive. Um, we are retiring a similar piece of equipment, a larger backhoe, uh tractor with rubber tires. Um, this year we're retiring that, so we asked for funding to replace that in this current budget. So, and that was approved. So we feel this meets our needs better than that other machines. So we're simply asking to use those fundings for this machine, which meets our needs. The, the motion tonight has two actions. One is to uh approve amendment number one to the cooperative agreement, which is administratively necessary for us to take the second action, which is just to approve the purchase. So uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Frosley.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
There's etiquette and you're supposed to be wearing a cowboy hat when you come up here and ask to buy equipment?
I would like to buy a tractor.
There's no hat. I'm, I'm on the fence. We'll have to see how I vote. There's no hat.
Are there any questions for Mr. Frosley from members of the council?
I mean, I'll wear a hat if I get a yes.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Moses?
No, I just want to thank you. Uh, I think it's very fiscally responsible, your whole plan and the recognition to pivot. And, and I appreciate you bringing this to us.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for any discussion or possible motion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Moses?
I move to approve the, and authorize the city manager to execute amendment, amendment number one to the Cooperative Purchase Agreement with Clark Equipment Company, DBA Bobcat Company to renew for one additional year through May 31st, 2024, revising revised pricing scheduled dated July 2022, and approve the purchase of a Bobcat E42R2 compact excavator in the amount of $69,182.09.
Second.
Third.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Moses. And then we have a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item eight is our call to the public. This is an opportunity where citizens have to address the city council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Your comments are limited to three minutes. There's a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have time. Yellow means you have one minute remaining. Red means that your three minutes is up. Again, we ask that you address uh directly to the council. So just uh face us when you address your comments, when you come to the podium. Uh, just state your name for the record and uh we'll start with Mr. Boyd.
Mayor, City Council, I'm up here mostly to make an announcement. Um, just a little history, back at the end of last year, I left the leadership of the Lake Havasu Republican Men's Club to run for a state-level position. Uh, I was elected in January as the Congressional District Nine Member-at-Large to the Executive GOP Board in Phoenix. What that does for us here in Lake Havasu is that I have an office here that is the ears for the executive boards. If there's comments and concerns of the constituents here in Lake Havasu, especially the people at home to hear this, that they could come to my office and let me know and it will go right to the board. There are three of us that was elected. There's one that has from Kingman North. I have North La Paz County and all the river cities. And then we have another gentleman that has the southeast side of Mojave County, down into the top of Maricopa County. Our chairman, Jeff DeWitt, realizes there's more to Arizona than Maricopa County. And he wants to hear from his constituents or the constituents in rural Arizona. So that would be my emphasis is facilitate that, comments, concerns that need to get to the board. Some of the things I get to do being member-at-large, I'm, uh, right now I'm getting ready to meet with uh Superintendent Stone and Chairman Niederman to help expand PACE Patriotic Americans for Constitutional Education in all grade levels, that's our goal, in the school system. Another thing I'm uh doing is I'm doing at the end of next month, a Robert's Rules of Order class. And uh Turning Point USA has graciously decided to come alongside with me to support this endeavor. And uh, we're going to be giving the class on April 29th. Also, I'm going to be working with Tom Goodfellow, who has the Constitutional Week uh Board. And we're going to begin giving constitutional classes here in Lake Havasu. Um, due to travel, uh, my uh conference times are uh mostly Thursdays and Fridays. I'm going to spend most of the first part of the week traveling. Um, I uh been graciously given space in the District Three office down here on McCulloch. So with that, if you have any questions, just wanted to make this announcement. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Janice Boyd, Mayor, City Council. I realize that a concern I have will fall on deaf ears. However, I am bringing this up for the public's ears and not to end a record. Hopefully the open call to the public is not cut out, further limiting our voice. Three weeks back, an item of great concern to many of our citizens was discussed. The item was to continue to bring agenda items under the two-person request versus a three-person request before items of discussion are placed on the council's agenda. After much discussion by council, it was verbally agreed by a majority that the two-person agreement would stand. The mayor stated it would stand and that it would continue to be two persons to bring an item of concern to the agenda. Since it was continued to stand, I believe that the mayor, and correct me if I am not correct, stated that it would, would stand and would not need a vote. It was also noted in the minutes that the current two-person call for an agenda item would stay. I understand that an item can be discussed more than once. However, it seemed quite sneaky by some members of the city council to bring up this item agenda again the following week and to then vote a change by a vote of four to three. The ruling should require three person before an item is added to the agenda, making it more difficult for the citizens to get an item onto the agenda for discussion. Many people caught this and are not pleased. I want to ask all of you, how do we trust in what you said was your decision and not need a vote, only to change it not in a year, but the following week? I believe it is a sad day when the citizens cannot trust what the four voted, originally stated they would stand, that it would stand, especially on a simple writ ruling.
During call to the public, we can't have a two-way conversation, but thank you for your remarks.
Good evening again, Mayor, City Council. I'd like to thank you for your service to the city and community. There are many great things that you've done for Lake Havasu and we, the citizens, do appreciate your work. I don't always agree with everything the city council says. But then who would agree with a statement like, "It's okay to be wrong as long as we are productive"? Wow, spoken like a true politician. That ranks right up there with, "We must first pass the bill to see what's in it." As City Councilmember Lane stated, this was simply about items that he feels are not appropriate. As a member of the city council, he has a vote that he can use to voice his opinion about proposed agenda items. But instead, he chose to silence the voices of two particular members of the council with a shady backroom amendment. Councilmember Dolan, I considered a voice of reason until he stated the agenda item to ignore all laws that were not based on the Constitution was inappropriate. At the same meeting, Mayor Sheehy stated that he has the duty to uphold the Constitution of the United States and Arizona. So how is that agenda so inappropriate? Councilmember Campbell and Lynn were elected by the people of this city to represent and speak for the people. So an agenda item meant to silence them is an agenda item meant to silence the people. At the previous city council meeting, no direction was given on how council members request items for further research. How is it that this councilmember Lane has a prepared written motion to vote on this amendment prior to any council discussion? Talk about optics of behind-the-scenes maneuvering. Mayor Sheehy mentioned that Lake Havasu City at one time implemented a requirement for two councilmembers to second a motion. How ironic. Yes, that was true. Back in 2005, the city council engaged in questionable zoning, zoning changes and behind closed-door meetings, I guess you now call them council retreats, and restricted some members' ability to bring agenda items by requiring two members second a motion. That mayor and city council engaged, enraged the people of Lake Havasu to the point that they recalled the mayor and three of the, of the councilmembers. In closing, drag queen shows for children, rezoning industrial property to residential and commercial property to residential, small residential commercial lots to high density, the foothills development, the stalled river development, Gestapo tap tactics to close down businesses during a fake pandemic, poor managed, poorly managed city, city courthouse project, along with this latest charade are making you feel like 2005 again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name's Emiliano Torres. Live up here in Havasu. Uh, I tend to want to make a comment on the part that was presented before. And I do have to agree with Councilmember Moses and Campbell. We need to consider the bridge as part of the initial plan in that if this park becomes as successful as we think it will be, you're going to find people taking shortcuts through the wash. Or they're going to be taking a shortcut through that other uh business that's on the north end of the park. So the business, the, the bridge is important. The second idea, I can't wait to go home and talk about the $3 million catalyst park that we're building and mention, "Oh yeah, honey, just wait, they're going to have repurposed storage containers for ba-, for bathrooms." No, come on. That, that's not $3 million worth of park. And in a minor issue that I heard, kept hearing and with chuckles and with laughs, the Site Six, the Site Six uh peanut gallery, you're spending $3 million for a park and you have a Site Six that on busy weekends, locals will go out there and have a good time watching people, you know, launch and retrieve their boat. You're not having to build them something to come and enjoy, you know, to enjoy. You're restricting it and you're kind of dismissing the fact that there are a lot of locals that like to go out there. Yeah, it's kind of silly. It's kind of not necessarily the best thing to do. But you already have someplace where people meet and you're not having to spend $3 million to put it up. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. My name is Frankie Lyons. Um, the council will be working on the budget here in the very near future. I just wanted to remind Councilman Moses that he stated last year that he would review the tax levy assessment that provides for the maintenance and operation of the London Bridge Plaza where the swap meet is held. This includes the parking, electrical service, water service and landscaping with the city pays for directly. Another reminder to review the contract with Go Lake Havasu and lower the amount of money we are paying them per prior council discussion to a more reasonable level since they have $2 million of our money in the bank. Also, a friendly reminder to anyone who wants to address anything with the city budget, to remember to bring those issues to the budget meetings. We need all of the people in this city to address this, these meetings. We need to make sure the council has adequate time to discuss any suggestions or concerns from the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during public, uh, call to the public?
Good evening again, Kelly. It's Bonnie Toy. I heard you say during-
I heard you say during the discussion time for the catalyst project, the businesses were supposed to read the newspaper because the newspaper had all these beautiful articles about the catalyst project inside of it. And I just wanted to inform you, in case you didn't know, that not everybody reads the newspaper. Not everybody can, not everybody purchases the internet subscription for the newspaper. And you have a YouTube page, you have a Facebook page. I don't know what other social media pages that you have. You have your webpage that you could inform citizens of all the events that you have. And they do not require citizens to pay for a newspaper or pay for an online subscription. Not, I'm not against the newspaper. I enjoy the newspaper a lot. However, when the newspaper charges for certain articles and then declares other articles free of charge, like, okay, the drag show information, I didn't need that to be free of charge with no paywall. However, this week, there was an article in the newspaper about suicide prevention that if I wanted any of that information, I would have to pay for it. Any citizen, they, they were asking for citizen input. Citizen, how is a citizen supposed to input anything to a newspaper if it's behind some paywall and citizens don't get to read that? Oh, but let me make sure I know all about Alec Baldwin or a drag show or something that has nothing to do with the citizens of Lake Havasu in the moment. And it's just really frustrating that you have a Facebook page that's free and available. You don't even tell people that you're having a city council meeting today and invite them to the city council meeting on your Facebook page or any of your, very rarely have any of your other meetings. If it wasn't for the webpage, I wouldn't know what time the meeting was. I just wanted to share that you, just in case you don't realize, people don't check your newspaper because unfortunately, some of the articles that they share cost citizens that don't want to spend the money. And it's really not the newspaper's job to inform everybody of city's business. I would think that's the city's job to inform the citizens of your business. Thank you.
Welcome, everybody. Morgan Braden, Spilerline Drive. I want to bring up two things. First, on the project for what I call Springburg Park. I agree with Mr. Dolan. I can tell you with the design you have right now that was presented, I personally take part in two events that are held at that park. That's the November gift show, as well as the spring craft show that was just held a couple of weeks ago. The way that park is set up now works perfect for those opportunities. The way it's going to be set up, you're gonna eliminate him. He's not gonna be able to hold that properly because there's, number one, 60% is not enough space to use. He uses most of that park for those projects. Most of the things I see happen at that park use a lot more than 60%. So I would encourage you to rethink that design. Maybe go with Nancy's idea of just putting the walkway in first because that's one of the biggest problems we've had at that park. We generally don't have a problem with people getting into the park for those things. They get in, no problem. Wheelchairs and all, they make it onto the park. It's not a problem. And number two, I wanted to mention, I agree with several of the other people here about silencing Michelle and Nancy. I will continue to voice my opposition with letters to the editor, which I'm sure everybody read the one that I put in earlier this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council during call to the public? All right, seeing now, we'll close call to the public. Are there any, on current events, item nine, are there any council committee reports? Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you. I do have a couple council committee reports. First off, we Go Lake Havasu had their retreat two weeks ago. I was attended by myself and Councilmember Campbell, Councilmember Lynn, and our city manager, Mr. Knutson. Go Lake Havasu talked about their mission, the direction that they need to go, the needs of the community and additional funding sources or different funding sources than just coming from the city. It was a good event. There was a lot of input from community members and look forward to seeing how that works out into the future. As has already been discussed, last night was the Parks and Recs meeting. There was a lot of people in attendance, though the room was pretty full with a lot of children especially. And they talked, the people talked a lot about the, the needs for our fields, our ball fields, whether it's soccer or baseball or football or whatever it is for the kids. Quite adamant about that. The very nice part about it was they came to us not just with issues, but also some solutions with grants and that kind of thing, which I thought was very nice that they actually had some solutions. One of the things that, that I suggested that they might want to do is visit all of the parks that we have in town as a board. Go out to the parks, take a look, prioritize, work with our Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Keen, and prioritize what issues we may have throughout our parks here. And then work with those different groups, the soccer groups, the baseball groups, and come up with some of these additional funding sources so that we can move forward. Kind of like the pickleball courts did, you know, where they had some private dollars coming in so that we can move forward and try to get these fields in better shape. I don't know whether they'll take my suggestion, but that's what I put out there. They seem to really agree with that. I know I got an email today, I believe we all got an email today from one of those citizens on some additional funding sources that we might want to look at. So with that, Mr. Mayor, those are my two reports.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Lane. Are there any other council committee reports? Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor, I was at the chamber today, Chamber Board meeting. It was very successful, a lot of positive things coming through ASU, including ASU, I believe, I'm trying to remember the name of it. It was right before I read in here, I should have wrote better notes. But they're gonna be adding additional off-campus classes of additional, about 140 of them. So that was positive. Of course, we're losing our dear Lisa Kruger. She is resigning, retiring, excuse me, that's a better word. And so we are also going to be encouraging people to apply for that position coming up very soon. Also, we're, it looks like we are looking for an additional board member. They're doing a lot of positive things. Of course, Mrs. Kruger admitted that she is looking forward to finding the new employee to see which direction that employee might take the chamber as well. Very exciting. The other is our MPO. We didn't have our meeting today, but I did attend a TAC meeting and it sounds like we had three good bidders come in for the 95 highway bid. And I believe the lowest bidder was under budget. I don't know when they're gonna be actually announced, but that's very good news. Also, I attended the state conference yesterday, the state senate, to discuss the 2543 appropriation bill, which is the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council is looking for about $330, $330 million to help with rural communities, which is extremely positive. We've made it through three hurdles. Yesterday's vote came as a bipartisan, five to one. We have a couple more steps to go. We'll be meeting again this Monday, which I plan to drive up and continue to encourage the importance of excessive pavement preservations and how we need to move past those and start doing more mills and fills upon our community to make safer roads and highways and sidewalks for our community. So that is really positive. A lot going on in our community, a lot to do, Mayor and Council. We got a lot on our plate. So excited, thank you so much, and I think that's it.
Thank you for your report. Are there any other council committee reports? I'll just mention from Mojave County Water Authority, Mr. Knutson mentioned it in his report, but myself and Ms. Gary went down to, and Ms. Brachmani, went down to Congressman Gosar's Town Hall, where we were talking about how do we solve water challenges throughout the state of Arizona? So obviously, with the drought that we're in, there's some other avenues. Like Havasu City doesn't have many options because we only have Colorado River Water as our allotment, but there are other options from some other areas that hopefully they can use to solve some of their issues without looking towards us to try and use some of our water resources. I'd like to thank Congressman Gosar for putting on that forum. And hopefully, that's just the beginning of many conversations that we'll have to have water augmentation projects as we continue our discussions on water going into the future. All right, future meetings. Item 10, Tuesday, April 11, 2023 at 6:00 PM. It will be our regular meeting. Then that same week, on Thursday, April 13, 2023 at 9:00 AM, we'll have our first budget and CIP overview work session. And then on Tuesday, April 25, 2023 at 5:30 PM, will be our regular meeting. That will be the, the first time that the new meeting time will be, it'll be our two, our second meeting of April, April 25 at 5:30 PM. Item 11, are there any future discussion items? All right, before we entertain a motion to adjourn, I just want to give a big thank you to Steve Blake in the control room. We've had a lot of the technical issues throughout this meeting. Not all of you know here in the room, but we had split screen issues and sound issues. So those at home, he will edit it so that those that are reading, are watching it in future times can do it. So thank you, Steve, in the control room. Item 12, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you for being here. Be kind and we'll see you next time.